Just kidding. Now, we're good? Okay, great.
Good morning and welcome to the New York City Hybrid Hearing on the Committee on Technology. At this time, please silent all electronic devices to vibrate or silent chair. We may begin.
Thank you so much. Good morning. My name is Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez and I'm the Chair of the Committee on Technology. I'm happy to hold today's hearing on access to technology and digital literacy programs in New York City. From the start of my tenure as Chair of this committee, I knew I wanted to focus all of the work that we do around equity, using my background as an organizer to inform how we can organize, educate, and work towards a more equitable city. Access to programs that promote digital literacy, especially in the elderly, and access to physical technological equipment is an important piece of the puzzle to bring all New Yorkers online. The hearing will focus on two bills. Intro 664, sponsored by yours truly, which would require the Department of Citywide Administrative Services, DCAST, to donate surplus city-owned computers, computer software, and computer equipment to public and private institutions for secular educational use and to nonprofit institutions for use by individuals with disabilities, senior citizens, or low-income individuals. And Intro 665, also sponsored by me, which would establish a digital literacy program for older adults. Data from the U.S. Census in 2021 showed that many New York City residents aged 65 years and older do not have access to broadband, and many older residents do not have access to the devices, knowledge, or financial means to connect. At the same time, we now use the Internet to book flights, transfer funds from bank accounts, check bus times, access vital city services, attend doctor's appointments through telehealth, and communicate with our loved ones through video messaging applications. Simply put, modern living requires Internet connection, access to devices, and skills to use such devices, all while ensuring that our personal data is protected. To this end, New York City had several programs aimed at bridging the digital divide. For example, in 2020, as part of the former Mayor's Equity Action Plan, the city, through the Mayor's Office of the Chief Technology Officer, now part of the Office of Technology and Innovation, partnered with T-Mobile, LG Electronics USA, and Older Adults Technology Services, Oats, to provide 10,000 Internet-connected tablets to older adults living in NYCHA developments through the Connected NYCHA Program. Residents aged 62 and older and living alone were prioritized for this distribution. The tablets came with 12 months of mobile Internet connectivity paid for by the City of New York. Participants also received free support from the Department for the Aging and Older Adults, and Oats, in setting up their devices, learning how to use them, accessing free classes and resources, and connecting with friends and family. Of course, such programs come with a cost. However, as we continue working on closing the digital divide in the city, we must not overlook our most vulnerable and our rapidly evolving population, as anyone fortunate to live long enough will eventually fall into the category of being elderly. There are 1.1 million older adults in New York City, making up 13% of the population, and that percentage is only expected to expand as we all inevitably age into the senior population. Ensuring this digital literacy is an essential service that the city provides. It's a safety net not just for the current aging population, but for all of us sitting in this room. Another way to bridge the digital divide is to donate technology. Many of our schools and nonprofits across the city are doing some of this vital digital literacy work already, and trying to bridge the digital divide with the few resources that we have. When an office decides that they need to upgrade a tablet, then there must be a process to ensure that that tablet is repurposed for someone that is in need of it. And working towards our environmental goals, donating devices to people and organizations in need also mitigates e-waste across our city. As part of this process, it will be vital that precautions in regards to the information stored on these devices is protected and wiped to prevent unintended disclosure of proprietary, confidential, or personal information. The committee is looking forward to learn more about the process and the efforts our city to expand access to Technology and Facilities Digital Literacy Program. Now, I'd like to thank the Technology Committee staff for putting together this hearing. I'd like to also recognize our Technology Committee members, Councilmember Sean Abreu and Councilmember Vicky Palladino. And then is Councilmember Holden on mic? And also recognize Councilmember Bob Holden, who's joining us from the internets. And I will now turn it over to Irene, our Committee Counsel for Administrative Proceedings.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. Now, we'll hear testimonies from administration. We have Brett Sidkov and Ryan Birchmeier from OTI and Roman Goffman from DCAST. And now, I ask you to raise your right hands. Thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth and answer honestly to Councilmember questions?
I do. I do.
Thank you. You might begin your testimony.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Gutierrez and members of the City Council Committee on Technology. My name is Brett Sykoff, and I am the Executive Director of Franchise Administration for the Office of Technology and Innovation for OTI. Here with me today is Ryan Birchmeier, Deputy Commissioner for Public Information at OTI. I am grateful for the opportunity to discuss OTI's partnerships related to digital literacy programs across the city. It has been a little over a year since OTI consolidated the city's technology offices, making enormous strides to bring broadband access to historically underserved populations citywide. It is an honor to lead the team making this important progress. However, we know that access to affordable and reliable Internet is only one part of the equation. Many of us take for granted just how much we rely on technology to communicate with friends and family, to do homework, to seek employment, and fulfill the duties of our jobs, to perform everyday necessary tasks like paying bills and online shopping, to name a few. We know that it is not enough to simply provide the means of gaining access through a broadband connection, but it is also necessary to empower individuals with the skills to navigate how to use digital tools, both physical and virtual, to fully participate in society. On the whole, there is a wide-ranging ecosystem for digital literacy programming, services, and supports that have varying touchpoints and support from the city. Participating entities range from public institutions, city agencies, library branches, to nonprofit and after-school providers, informal learning collectives, and higher education partners that serve tens to hundreds of thousands of residents annually. Of note, the Department for Youth and Community Development administers the council's own Digital Inclusion and Literacy Initiative Grants Program, which enables each council member to allocate discretionary funds to advancing digital literacy resources at the most local level. For our part, OTI, currently under legacy offices, has invested in digital literacy through its Connected Communities Initiative for over a decade. This initiative funds trusted anchor institutions and agency partners to provide free and reliable Internet access, connected devices, high-quality digital literacy instruction, and technical assistance to help equip New Yorkers with digital skills. Overall, Connected Communities underwrites over 100 public sites to enable the critical delivery of devices, software, mobile hotspots, and over 24,000 hours annually of high-quality digital literacy programs that help New Yorkers gain essential skills. OTI does not directly administer the programs funded through Connected Communities. Rather, Department of Parks and Recreation, Department for the Aging, New York City Housing Authority, and the city's three library systems provide an array of digital literacy programs for a wide range of populations citywide, ranging from basic access to comprehensive and advanced digital skills trainings and software certifications for residents in high-need communities. A few notable examples include Brooklyn Public Library provides a laptop loan program across 18 branches that recently distributed 1,500 devices. New York Public Library offers 100 classes designed for fundamental digital citizenship, exposure, and mastery of technical concepts on public computers with professional-grade software. Queens Public Library uses funding from Connected Communities and from the Federal Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act to train dedicated personnel who can deliver workshops, including a course to provide contextualized English for speakers of other languages classes for new immigrants, and workforce training in childcare, healthcare, and technology for residents. New York City Parks operates media education labs in its recreation centers, providing spaces and equipment for members to creatively express themselves. NYCHA's Digital Van Program brings mobile hotspots, laptops, Wi-Fi, and a printer to public housing communities citywide. New York City Aging subcontracts to Oats to reach over 80,000 older adults every year, 80,000, with digital literacy programming. OTI supports a portion of the NYC Digital Safety Project, which helps librarians throughout the city gain skills to support New Yorkers with digital hygiene through critical partners such as Metro Library Council. In addition to the Connected Communities pot, OTI also supports digital literacy through other program areas. For example, the Open Data Team, in partnership with the civic technology nonprofit Beta NYC, developed a curriculum and trained a group of volunteer Open Data ambassadors to teach other New Yorkers about what Open Data is and how it can be used. In 2022, we held 25 of these Open Data education classes and taught nearly 800 people about Open Data. These classes were hosted by a variety of organizations, including community boards, councilmember offices, borough president offices, and the Civic Engagement Commission. We thank the council for their continued support of this vital program. Additionally, the Link NYC franchise includes a requirement for our franchisee City Bridge to provide high-speed Internet to a facility in each borough that offers technology training or other vital community service to the public. Such facilities are called gigabit innovation centers, and they are powered by the Link NYC network. In the past year, City Bridge and OTI have celebrated the opening of three new gigabit centers. In Manhattan, we partnered with Silicon Harlem and the See Better Foundation to open the Innovation Space for People Gigabit Center. In the Bronx, the Gigabit Center is located at the Andrew Friedman Home, in partnership with the Knowledge House and the Bronx Community Foundation. In Queens, the Gigabit Center is located at the Allen Senior Center, in partnership with NYC Aging, supporting workshops and courses on topics such as wealth and resource management, beginning and intermediate computer technology, driver safety, hearing deficiency and hearing aids, and memory improvement workshops. We expect to unveil two more gigabit centers this year in Brooklyn and Staten Island. With respect to the older adult population, OTI recognizes that older adults need particular support to engage with the benefits of digital life. We believe that digital literacy programming, when paired with devices and access, combat social isolation and mobility barriers, provide basic skills for staying safe online, and helps maintain civic engagement. As previously mentioned, through Connected Communities, OTI provides a role as facilitator, connector, convener, and advisor where collaboration will extend the impact of digital literacies. Recent examples of our work with NYC Aging to this end include facilitating connections with libraries and strategies for enrollment in the Affordable ACP Program, and collaboration with the San Francisco Tech Council to discuss digital equity gaps and barriers for older adults and implications for access, affordability, and adoption. I will now turn to the legislation being considered today. Intro 665, sponsored by Chair Gutierrez, would require OTI, in consultation with NYC Aging and relevant stakeholders, to establish and implement an online digital literacy program to serve older adults. As I have hopefully laid out earlier in testimony, digital literacy, particularly for older adults, is something we support and aim to continue supporting in the future. We understand that the council deeply cares about this kind of programming and hopes it will not only continue in its current form, but will also flourish and become more effective for seniors. We are completely aligned with that sentiment. However, the bill, as it is currently written, prescribes a role for OTI to more directly administer digital literacy training for seniors in a singular program with broadly-defined parameters. As mentioned, the city has a robust ecosystem of existing digital literacy providers, and OTI's best function is to leverage digital literacy practitioners and expertise rather than either staff these programs with in-house personnel or set limitations on the curriculum practiced by the city's partners. We worry that this bill could inadvertently compromise the incredible work already underway. We are looking forward to discussing with you how the city, the council, and the numerous organizations with whom we collaborate can best deliver digital literacy training in the future. I will now turn to my colleagues, the Department of Citywide Administrative Services, to provide their testimony.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Gutierrez and members of the Committee on Technology. I am Roman Goffman, Acting Deputy Commissioner for Citywide Procurement at the Department of Citywide Administrative Services. Thank you for your interest in our agency as we strive to make city government work for all New Yorkers. I'm pleased to have this moment to testify on Introduction 664, which seeks to require DCAST to donate surplus city-owned computers, computer software, and computer equipment. We continue to review this legislation, but are in support of the spirit of the bill and its intent to facilitate access to technology. Introduction 664 does raise questions regarding how a permanent donation program might operate and how outside parties might engage this program. We look forward to working with the council and our partners in government to ensure a donation program that is user-friendly, straightforward, and allows interested parties with equal access to surplus city-owned property. Thank you for your time today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for your testimonies. My first question is for OTI. Thank you so much for your testimony and kind of outlining some of the existing literacy program. Is there anything else that OTI can share or any other efforts ongoing or upcoming that aim to increase older adult access to technology and digital literacy through your agency?
Yeah, so, thank you for the question, Chair. We are obviously wholly committed to continuing the Connected Communities program, which for many years has served the community very well, both in the older adult, the younger population. I think we would like to continue to expand the program where possible, to fill in that gap in the middle where citizens may not be covered if they're not in those two cohorts. And we're continuing to look at ways to provide that targeted programming where it's possible. But we continue to rely on our partners, who have, again, served the city very, very well over the years, who have the expertise in this area. And where they come to us and say they have additional need for either funding or want to borrow our expertise in the area of connecting with certain partners, of course, we meet with them all the time and will continue to do so.
Can you confirm if the gigabit centers that are funded and facilitated by Link NYC, is that's correct? Is the programming that they do, is any of it catered specifically to the senior population? Or what does, if you can kind of give us a layout of what that programming looks like?
Yeah, thanks. For sure. Yeah, two of the three centers are located in older adult facilities. I think it's Andrew Friedman and, I forgot the other one. But yes, they're already in existing older adult facilities, and then this program just supplements all the existing services they have in place, provides additional broadband infrastructure, they provide new devices. But it's essentially powered by the Link NYC franchise in every sense of that word.
I'm sorry, can you say that last word?
It's powered by the Link NYC franchise in terms of the broadband infrastructure that's in place there, from the fiber and the facilities. But it already serves older adults, and we just amplify the services.
And does Link NYC do the programming, or are they partnering with organizations, libraries to do that programming?
I believe they are partnering with the existing programming that's in place with the directors of those facilities, yeah.
Okay.
I will also add, Councilmember, that the latest one that launched last month was in the Allen Senior Living Facility in Queens.
Okay. Okay. I have a question regarding our city's shelters. Some of the testimony that we had from the commissioner last month, I think at the end of December, was confirming that almost all shelters are connected to the Internet, if not all. Do you have a sense of how many of them are equipped with computers, other devices? And do you have a sense if their clients also have access to those devices?
Yeah, so, my understanding is during the pandemic, obviously, the priority was to provide service to family shelters for the kids in need and family members in general. And there are over 200 shelters that have connectivity today, and as new shelters come online, we work with the providers to build out the connectivity. But in terms of devices and other programming for digital literacy, I don't know that the shelter Wi-Fi program as currently constituted offers that. But if there's a need for devices, obviously, our agency partners will let us know, and we'll see if there's anything we can do to accommodate.
Thank you. So, from your testimony, the pushback that I'm getting on this bill is that you believe you're not the programming experts, and that there are programs that already exist. Do you all have any other concerns about this bill, perhaps budget-related, that you have reservations about?
Yeah, I think, again, given the longevity of this program and the success that we've realized and have seen over the years, the concern is if the city has to, or would be required to take a more proactive role in providing and administering the programs, we could be essentially competing for the same amount, pot of funding that goes to these partners already who rely on this to support the programs that are in place. So, they have the expertise, they have the constituencies, they are the constituencies that they know best, and they know how to target them. So, I think if we were to provide something that's different or supplement it in some way, it could ultimately be a net negative and take away some of the great work that they're doing and the money that goes to them.
So, the concerns that you have are, if I'm synthesizing this correctly, is just about overstepping, I guess, with some of the existing work that some of these nonprofits are already doing? You don't see it as a broader support role, you don't see it as maybe even necessary? I think what one of these bills wants to accomplish is to be able to donate these devices. I think OTI plays a really big role in cleaning these devices and making sure that, once they're received, they're safe, right, for the previous and the new owners? So, you do not believe that OTI can play a significant role in that partnership and overseeing that partnership?
Yeah, thanks, Chair, for that question. So, I think in terms of the devices versus the programming, I think those are two maybe different subjects. Certainly, with the programming, we do feel like the partners who have been in place for many years and have provided the program have been really doing a great job, and we'd like to supplement it wherever we can. With respect to the devices, we could certainly look at to see where there's potentially available devices that can be doled out to the centers or to the institutions that are administering the programs to support the literacy programming that they have in place. So, we can certainly look at that.
Okay. I want to just switch over to Intro 664, which is about the devices, so this will go to both. For OTI, unless it's, I think it's OTI, but could you walk me through the device sanitization process?
For DCAST's part, I'll let OTI speak if they have anything to add. So, for DCAST's part, where we receive surplus equipment, it's done by the partner agencies that have the equipment that are no longer in use or end-of-life or have no value. Those IT departments would have to clear the devices before it comes to us. So, typically, they just wipe out the entire hard drive before it comes to us.
The agent, whatever agency it is.
Whatever agency has the equipment in their inventory, yes.
Okay. And they're capable of doing that? In no instance do they reach out to OTI for assistance with wiping out those devices?
Not that I know of, no.
Is it something they can do, or just they don't do?
That DCAST can do.
That the agency, whatever agency it is that's in surplus of said equipment, let's say they've tried to wipe it out, they've run into some issue, do they ever reach out to OTI, or it's something that internally they figure out?
I'm not aware of any issues that they've run into in that regard, but yeah.
Okay. And then, Roman, right? Thank you. Do you have a approximate number of equipment that, in a year or even in the last year, was donated or brought to DCAST because of no use?
So, I could, after this hearing, follow back up with the actual documentation of what equipment, the quantities. The only thing I know offhand is the value of revenue that we received for auctioning those equipment. It was about $36,000 for fiscal year '22. But we could share an entire list of what agency submitted it and what the equipment was.
And is this something that happens during a particular time of the year, or just rolling basis, these agencies are reaching out to DCAST saying, like, "We've got all this stuff"?
It's just a rolling basis. Once an agency either switches out equipment or decides the equipment's no longer functioning, and they want to either salvage it, auction it off, or give it to surplus, they'll reach out to us at that time. There's no timeline.
And can you describe what kind of equipment are folks giving, are donating, or giving back to DCAST?
Typically, we see a lot of older screen monitors, some older printers, there may be computers in some laptops.
And laptops.
But we could provide a full list of what happened.
Are there also stuff like keyboards and just smaller things, things of that nature that you're also receiving?
There might be. Typically, those keyboards are reusable unless they're broken and then they get destroyed. It's more of like equipment that has a tendency to have end-of-life that are no longer working for the agency.
Got it. And once you receive these devices, is there any secondary sanitization that DCAST does on this equipment?
So, we do review to see that if it's a computer or a laptop, if the item has been reset and there's no personal information on it, that's as far as it typically goes.
Okay. And then, what happens typically after, or how long are you all in possession of it before you determine it finds, before you determine what the next step is?
So, our typical steps in any surplus, whether it's IT equipment or anything else, is once we receive it from an agency, we do internal requests for city agency transfers. So, we put it out for about seven days to all other city agencies to see if they may have use for it first. If nobody claims it from another city agency, we then put it on our Public Group Auction site, and we auction it off. If there is no value or something is damaged and nobody bids on it through the auction site, even to use as scrap metal or other necessities, we issue a destroy order back to the agency for them to use e-waste. It's a DSNY contract for IT equipment.
And you don't, do you have a sense of what those percentages are, how many you're able to utilize in auction off versus how much gets sent to e-waste?
Not offhand, but I believe we could provide that information.
Okay. And then, the $36,000 value that you referenced earlier, that is particular to the usable items that you'd be auctioning, or everything?
So, it's everything. So, we auction off items sometimes that are not usable either, and there's companies that might use it for parts, that buy it at low values, or they use for scrap metal, other instances.
That's so interesting.
We don't really, we don't review if it's usable at that time.
No. Do you want to ask that? What is, can you share what happens with this money after this auction?
It goes to the city's general fund.
It goes to the city, okay. Do you have a sense of what that looks, I mean, it changes year to year, do you have a sense of what that looks like?
The total value of all our surplus?
Yeah.
We could send you the information for previous fiscal years.
And is this auction, like, once a year? How often?
This auction is continuous.
Very interesting, said auction.
It's like eBay for the city.
Goodness. Okay. My, I have a couple more questions, before I go on to Councilmembers, do you all have any questions? Vicky, all right, let me just get through two more, and then I'll pass it off. Do you all keep any documentation of the stuff that you take in, the devices that you take in from these agencies?
Yeah, so, we, the documentation is typically saved on our auction website, the Public Group. So, every agency has a dedicated salvage officer that notifies DCAST through this online platform of an item that they want to sell or dispose of, and all the documentation is saved on there.
Do you know of any other municipalities that obviously also take in a big amount of surplus items, and like what they do with those items?
I believe from municipalities that I have spoken to, everybody has this type of surplus auctions.
It's strictly an auction?
Yes, it's strictly an auction.
And can you share how large is the team, or how many folks are the ones responsible for receiving this equipment, and then like double-checking that it's all, all the information's been moved?
At DCAST, currently, I believe we have three staffers on hand. I think that's the team for DCAST.
And is there any, are there any agencies or any agency that, I guess, has more of these devices? Is there anything that you can share about the agencies that are?
No, we don't have insight into agencies' inventories. We only get notified once they specify that something is ready for surplus.
Got it. So, part of the bill, 664, requires that the DCAST commissioner kind of put together a process for which they will donate these equipments, right, these devices. Have you, as the deputy, have you all, have you considered, maybe, I know that part of your testimony says, you know, you want to keep engaging, which I appreciate, but have you considered what some of those guardrails or some of those rules will look like to determine the eligibility of an organization to receive that device?
I think we're still discussing it internally and would like to really review this internally in our agencies as well with partner agencies, and actually receive comments from the council once we come up with our comments on the bill, and we'll work together to try to figure out a program that works for everybody, both the city and the residents of the city.
Got it. I think for anyone that's ever worked at a nonprofit or worked alongside a nonprofit, the reality is that, you know, and you know this, tech does not have a long lifeline. And oftentimes, we get contacted by nonprofits who need assistance with something as small as one computer. As councilmembers, that's not eligible, right? It's not something, we cannot donate one computer in capital. So, a program like this and a bill like this would really help support, whether it's those nonprofits that are looking to upgrade, or a lot of our nonprofits are starting to branch out and do work outside of their headquarters, of their offices in the district. And having the support and knowing that this safety net exists, I think, is really vital to the continued work that they're doing. So, I am eager to continue working with you all to see what is the best way, because I do believe the need is there, and what is the best way to create those parameters and ensuring that these nonprofits that need it are connected to it. I'm going to have, I'm going to pass it to Councilmember Palladino for questions, and then Councilmember Abreu. You're okay? Okay, Councilmember Palladino.
Good morning, and thank you. I have a question. Where do most of these devices come from? When you say municipalities, where do you get these devices?
So, we only oversee surplus for New York City municipality, mayoral agencies. So, just the agencies.
What happens to, I don't mean to interrupt, our schools? What happens to our, I don't mean to interrupt, our schools? They use things and then they're put in a school basement. And a lot of this stuff is still very useful and some, in some cases fairly new. They're just somewhat outdated. Does the city have access to reusing what has been placed in a school basement or a warehouse? So that we could better serve our senior citizens?
I'll circle back to see if we have access to Department of Education's inventory and if they use utilize their own surplus agreement or they piggyback off of ours, but I'll give you that answer afterwards.
Yes, because we're constantly doing with our discretionary funding, upgrading technologies in a lot of our schools. So when I go to visit my schools, I often ask, you know, your smart board works fine. What's the issue here? That we have to give another hundred thousand to a school for technology upgrade? But my concern lies with what do we, what do you do with that equipment that is perfectly good? That is being no longer used, whether it be laptops, whether it be, here comes the boomer in me, the iPads? Because I'm a senior and I deal a lot with senior citizens. And a lot of our smaller places for the seniors to go every day, the senior centers, they don't, they need classes. And I know we're concentrating a great deal on NYCHA and that's fine. However, we need, our senior centers need classes. So with these outdated, somewhat outdated, to the seniors fairly new, what can we do to help our senior centers get more of these devices?
I'll follow up on the DOE specifically, but talking on other agencies that have surplus equipment. Like I said before, we're in support of this bill. We just want to make sure that it works for everybody. I just want to just mention just items that are unused compared to surplus. It's different meanings, right? So, so decast specifically doesn't direct agencies of when or what they need to give up to our Office of Surplus Activity. Their agencies have to come to us saying, hey, we're no longer using these items, either they're not working, there, there's no life left in them, there's no value left in them. And that's when we take over, take over the the equipment and either transfer to other agencies if somebody else wants them or auction it off or after the fact, if this bill, after this bill, we would work with you guys to figure out how to do a donation program. But we wouldn't just say, you know, we wouldn't have the ability to go to agents to see just what products are unused and take them over and say, you should donate these. Each agency would have to specify their equipment themselves.
Okay, I think that just about covers it for me. Like I said, I'm more concerned with what happens to the Board of Ed, Department of Ed, their, their equipment and where it goes. Because that's something that I think really can be used. Even in, in schools that don't have, the smart boards are huge. They're constantly changing them out. And I want to see these things recycled and and used because they're perfectly good and they're in the basement. So, okay, that's where my questions lie. Thank you very much.
And did you, Roman, did you make the distinction between surplus items that you're receiving versus like unused or?
So the agencies make the initial distinction of surplus, right? That they're no longer using it, they want to transfer it out. Even if an agency would say there's no life left and we want to destroy it, we don't allow them to destroy it unless at least we attempt to auction it off. Sometimes we do multiple attempts to auction it off just in case somebody didn't see it. We wouldn't issue a destroy order before that. So we, we don't make the distinction of what's unusable. The market does.
Got it. Next, we're going to have Councilmember Abreu.
Thank you, Chair. This question's for OTI. In your testimony, you delineate some concerns that you have on six, six, five. I understand that six is four, there's at least some support here. Can we count on the administration's support on getting to a final bill that works for both parties?
Yeah, of course. Thank you, Councilmember, for that. You know, we're happy to sit down with council at any time to talk about the programming that's in place, what we're doing to support it, to fund it, and look at potential expansion opportunities or alternative programs, but absolutely, we're always happy to sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Abreu. I also just like to acknowledge Councilmember Juan has joined us. Next, we have Councilmember Holden via Zoom with a question.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Do you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think both bills are very, very good. And as, as a council member that's been funding Oats for, since I've been in the council, I think that's one of the most successful programs. Certainly, the problems we had though with it, with our seniors is when the senior centers were closed. And that, you know, that presented a problem. But I would go to the graduation classes for the older adults who, you know, took iPad classes or computer classes. And they actually had a graduation, which was great, and a certificate. And they just felt that it opened up a whole new world for them. And it's money well spent. So anything we could do to expand that, because if it's, in my district, I don't have NYCHA housing, so I rely on the senior centers where they can get, and certainly the libraries with the, with the, the cutbacks and the open hours, we had a very, very limited, again, exposure to technology for older adults. So what are we doing with our, with the DOE? Is the city doing anything with training seniors in the, in the schools for technology?
Thank you, Councilmember Holden. I'm not aware of anything specifically related to DOE and related to our connected communities.
Bingo. So that's where you guys, again, that, that could be a program. We have classrooms, we have, everything is set up, we have the technology in the classrooms. So there should be an older adult program set up. And again, it could be from your office, it could, you know, you could facilitate it. But here, here's two bills that aim to address technology with older adults, which is, we all know is sorely lacking. They need the help. And without technology nowadays, the person's at a disadvantage. So here, here we have schools, we have technology in the schools, and we have the classrooms in the schools, obviously, that we could open up. And these two bills aim to address some of that. By the way, on, on the equipment, I think most of us fund the, the technology recycling program. And it's amazing what is thrown out. You know, perfectly good iPads, people upgrade. And this stuff is, is, goes to landfill or it does get recycled. But, but there is a greater need that the city can facilitate, I think, through these, through both bills. So I, I think that there's a, there's something, there's a void here. And we have to put our heads together, both of the council and the administration, to try to fill this. So I would support both bills and I think the administration should also. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holden, and thank you for your, sharing your experience in districts especially that don't have NYCHA. Because even in those programs that are operating in NYCHA, I don't, you know, I always think that there's more reason to continue to invest and expand and there's no reason why we can't utilize our school buildings, which is why community schools is so important. I have a, a couple of questions regarding the, the programs that you detailed in your opening statement. So obviously, we're, I think a lot of us at the council are very supportive of, of supporting these programmings that are in our libraries, right? They're hubs, they're community facilities. And in districts where there are no community centers or NYCHA or enough senior centers, libraries are that home. But I'm deeply concerned about the proposed cuts to libraries. We're hearing from the Queens Public Library, the Brooklyn Library, the New York Library about how they're fearing having to go back to a time where the libraries are closed on Sundays, having to roll back a lot of these programs that you yourself admit are crucial. So I hear what you're saying, where the idea is that these, these partners are experts, but we can't, we can't elevate them while at the same time saying we're likely going to cut your budget and we need to have a safety net. So can you speak to those proposed cuts and where you are all seeing kind of how those cuts are going to impact pro, senior programming, ESL classes, computer programs?
Yeah, Councilmember, thank you for that question. And we, I mean, we completely agree and I think our testimony makes it clear that we, we feel very strongly about those programs and libraries playing a critical role in the communities they serve and, and the success of the programs to, to date. Unfortunately, Brett and I have not been in higher level conversations between the administration and OMB about the proposed budget. So we can't speak to, to any of the, the proposed budgets here. But, but I think we've made it clear that we are, are in complete support of, of these programs.
And if I may add, in terms of the Connected Communities Program, that is fully funded for the next three years. So the, the digital literacy side of it, you know, setting aside the broader budget for, for the libraries, which I, I can't speak to. That is fully funded, so that's going to continue through twenty-twenty-five.
Which program is that, I'm sorry?
So that's Connected Communities, which is the OTI, what we oversee for our partner agencies like, like the libraries, like parks and NYC Aging. So that, that is in place and that, you know, we're good there.
Do you feel confident?
I do, I do.
Just because there's, there have been some budgets that have been approved, for example, between last administration and this administration that had locked in funding between FY twenty-two to twenty-six. And that's not the case that we're looking at for FY twenty-four. So that's why I'm asking if you can confirm that that money will be there and not, not be sacrificed.
Yeah, that's certainly the expectation. It's been funded for over ten years and we're going to continue that.
Thank you. I wanted to, let me just, sorry, give me one second. I wanted to ask about the, the Connected NYCHA Program. So that's hopefully OTI can, can speak to a little bit about that. That's the, the program that started during the pandemic. You, you talked about it in your, in your opening testimony. So I'm just curious, in twenty-twenty-one, the city announced a year extension of free internet service for those ten thousand tablets distributed to older adults in NYCHA during the pandemic in twenty-twenty. Can you share what the current status of this original Connected NYCHA Program that was started in twenty-twenty?
Sure, thanks, Chair. So the ten thousand tablets with connected service that was provided to NYCHA seniors, many of them are still active, meaning the, the devices are still in service. I think we get reports every now and then where I think there's about half or so that are still active and the service is still being provided. That said, we are looking to see if we can get all those NYCHA seniors who are in developments that are served by Big Apple Connect, which has a much higher bandwidth and can get better service to them, to make sure that those older adults are aware of Big Apple Connect and are going to engage with us and sign up where possible. So that eventually, at some point, that service may end. I believe at this point, it's month to month. But as a long-term strategy, Big Apple Connect will be, will certainly better serve those older adults. So as we go into NYCHA facilities and try to sign people up for Big Apple Connect, many, just anecdotally, many older adults will say, you know, what for? What do I need it for? And that goes to, you know, that speaks to the, you know, the additional literacy training that they need so that they can be, you know, they can participate in the digital world that we live in. They can be safe online and effectively use it to communicate with relatives or do banking or purchase, telehealth, anything that, you know, they want. They're just not aware of how they can utilize Big Apple Connect. So that's going to be something that we focus on in the, in the coming year, targeting those NYCHA seniors who have access to Big Apple Connect, getting them connected. And if there's other programs that could be offloaded, we're going to seek to do that as well.
So between twenty-twenty-one, which is I believe like when the program, the, the original timeline was for, and today, there are seniors that may or may not still have these devices, but are maybe not connected, right? Especially for those that are not in a Big Apple Connect development. Is that, is that, is that the case?
That, and I'm sorry, ask the question again.
Of seniors that are, that are, of the original ten thousand, can you confirm that ten thousand tablets were actually distributed? Do you have a sense of that?
I believe they were, yes.
They were. And you said about half are still being utilized.
That's correct.
But those that are being utilized, those seniors or those recipients are paying for an internet service, right?
They're, they're not.
They are not, okay.
They have not paid a dime.
So the city also extended not just the tablet use, but the connectivity?
Yeah, at this point, it's month to month, but yeah, the, the older adults who have those tablets and the service are, have not paid a dime.
Okay, and just to confirm that I heard correctly, the goal is for those seniors with ta, with devices that are in a Big Apple Connect designated development is just to connect them with Big Apple Connect to the city? And is the city paying for that connectivity month to month for those seniors that are not connected with Big Apple Connect?
I'd have to check the records to see what we're being built for, if, if it's devices that are not active. Don't believe we're getting built, but I will have to go back and check.
Because the city was paying for that connectivity for that year during the pandemic and I'm assuming also continued to pay during the extension. So if you could give us a sense of how many of those devices are active that the city is paying for?
Sure, we'll look at that, absolutely.
And then to the best of your knowledge, is Oats still providing that technological training and assistance to older adults in those NYCHA buildings?
I believe they are, yeah.
They are, okay. Okay. And then could you confirm about of the, the tablets or devices that are still in use today?
With respect to the NYCHA?
Yeah, with respect to the Connected NYCHA Program.
Yeah, we'll look into that. That's part of like identifying how many tablets are, are still in service, are still active.
And, and just so you can educate me, was the idea that they would keep these devices in perpetuity?
That's correct, yeah.
Great, okay. Do seniors know what to do with them once they don't want them anymore? Ergo this bill, my friend. I think it's a good opportunity. I'd hate for ten thousand devices to be tossed out on the street or in these developments. Do you all, does OTI for those tablets, I'm still on the Connected NYCHA Program, does OTI, I think it was T-Mobile you said was the partner that, and, and so to your knowledge, is, is T-Mobile still the partner even month to month?
Yes, it is.
They are, okay. So I have some questions about Big Apple Connect, which I know you're so enthused to talk about. So in September, we had a hearing about Big Apple Connect. It was, I think, on the same day as the announcement. Can you give us an update on how Big Apple Connect is doing? I know you said earlier that the goal for this year is to just do more outreach to ensure that these tenants that are in these developments have access to it. So can you explain a little bit about what that looks like? And what is the goal? Like, how can we get, how can we meet that goal? How can we get the, these folks enrolled?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for that. So Big Apple Connect launched last year, sought to provide connectivity to NYCHA households immediately. We went in there, infrastructure was in place, we worked with the providers to quickly set up tabling events, get people signed up. Thanks to Councilmember Juan as well and, and seeing her there. And it was a super success, having been at, I think, every development personally and seeing the faces of people, you know, signing up, hearing about the program, initially skeptical, hearing that it's, it's legitimate and that they're able to get installed the same day. We have installers right onsite. You could clearly see the difference it was making in people's lives once they understood that either they didn't have service or were reluctant to engage in service because they didn't know if they could afford the, the service every month and know that, that that was going to be taken care of. So we, we're extraordinarily happy with that. As we look to, and to question about where we are today, it's at a hundred and thirty developments, currently touching about ninety thousand households, just over ninety thousand households. Of those, about sixty-eight thousand are enrolled in the program. So we're about seventy-four percent of who is eligible, who have signed up for the program. So that's really where we're going to, over the next, over this year, particularly as the weather improves and we could do more onsite, open outdoor events and get people signed up. We're going to target those, those households, those individuals who have been either unaware of the program or reluctant to sign up, what do not have connectivity today to sign up and take advantage of the program.
Can you, who, who's eligible? I didn't realize that there was a distinction aside from like you living in the development. Who is?
So everybody within an eligible development is eligible. When I say eligible, I mean developments, there are, there are some NYCHA developments that are not yet in the program and we're going to look to expand the, the overall scope of the program.
Oh, I see, so of the developments.
If you live in one of the hundred and thirty developments, you are automatically eligible.
Got it, so about seventy-four percent of those residents are, are connected or present. Do you have a sense of, of those, of that seventy-four percent that are eligible, how many of them are, how many of those units are older adults?
We don't, but that's part of what we're looking to do as we, as we analyze the, the, those individuals who have not signed up yet. Try to identify exactly why, whether they're older adults, whether they're, whatever demographic that they fall in, try to target them and get them to sign up. So we're, we're working very closely with the mayor's public engagement unit to try to identify validators, ambassadors, those who can target, you know, those, those individuals in the community who have not yet signed up, try to find out why and work with them to, to at least make them aware of the program and engage them and hopefully sign them up.
Thank you. Something that we spent some time on at the September hearing was getting a sense of, of the cost. And I know that it was a little bit of, you know, expectation, that there was a certain amount of that Big Apple Connect cost and there was an expectation that in this future budget, where we are now, we'd be able, we'd be able to support that. Can you share how much the agency has spent on Big Apple Connect to date? And what the, what the expectation is to, to continue to fund this so that it rolls out in the way that you? And what the what the expectation is to to continue to fund this so that it rolls out in the way that you've detailed?
Sure, and and I may turn this over to Ryan in a moment, but I I'll just say generally, I believe today, our preliminary budget is being released, so I I think there may be some, we may have to go back to our budget folks.
I can't wait till 12:30.
Yes. So we probably have to go back to our budget folks just to identify what was in there, but I don't know if Ryan knew of any.
Thank you. So do you have a sense of how much, you 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 don't know how much Big Apple Connect has cost to date, though?
I think we estimated what the the cost was going to be, and it's going to be depending on the number of people who sign up, households who sign up. I think it was going to be in the in 20 to 30 million dollar range. But it's really dependent on the number of people who sign up at at this point.
And is this is this 20 or 30 million dollar range per month?
No, 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 it'd be per year.
That's the cost for the year, okay. So in January of 2020, the Internet Master Plan was announced. There was a cost of a capital cost of $157 million towards this investment. It sounds to me that the agency has moved away from the Internet Master Plan, based on some stuff that I read in November. You can confirm if not. I know that the many times that we've asked OTI to to come to these hearings, the feedback that that we got was that the Internet Master Plan was being assessed, it was being assessed in March and September. Can you share what the assessment has been looking like? Can you confirm if if the agency is in fact moving away from a focus on the Internet Master Plan? And then can you share what's going to happen to that $157 million capital allocation? If you've used any of that money for Big Apple Connect, if you can just confirm that?
Yeah.
I I can say that we've we've confirmed this in in the media, that we that we are moving away from the previous administration's Internet Master Plan. The immediate focus was was filling the immediate need to get folks, the most vulnerable communities in in NYCHA, to get them connected as quickly as possible. That does not mean that there is not middle and long-term planning happening in OTI. In October of last year now, we released a OTI Strategic Plan, which outlined our our entire approach to to tech and our strategic initiatives. There there is a section on connectivity in that that lies that that outlines some broad buckets of of where we're trying to go to increase broadband access across the city. But I, in the coming year, we will, now that we are solving the immediate need of getting the most vulnerable communities access, we will start to outline some of those longer-term strategies now that we've we've fixed, we've fixed at least a a portion of the population and getting them online.
But what?
And on the on the on the money, we are still in conversations with O&amp;B about the best use for for that money, so we we can follow up with you.
But to your knowledge, the Big App, Big Apple Connect, since it started, I would say like last last summer, 2022, you have not utilized that initial capital investment of 157?
That's correct.
That was intended for the Internet Master Plan? So Ryan, so I understand, you've confirmed that the Internet Master Plan is something that this agent, this administration is not interested in moving. But I'm disheartened because it wasn't just a like a plan that the previous administration put together. It was a plan that nonprofits and advocates have been putting together for decades, right? It was just something that the administration was able to package in a very nice PDF. But the intent and the mission is not this last administration. It's very much tied to New Yorkers' real needs. So while I understand that you all feel that the most vulnerable is, for example, those in in those NYCHA developments, I agree. I think the Internet Master Plan was an attempt, like most major cities, to look at this comprehensively because NYCHA is not the only need, NYCHA is not the only pocket. We have families in project-based Section 8 and voucher-based Section 8, like they're like, what's good with my internet? And that's real, that you all have to respond to. So I'm curious, kind of what the assessments that you all shared, you were doing, what what came up, what's the conclusion that helped determine that this Internet Master Plan is not something that this administration is moving forward with?
Well, I think, I I'll turn it over to Brett since he's the expert here. But I think I think we can all agree that there were a lot of components to the Internet Master Plan that were that were good, but but.
What were the ones that were not good? I just I I just feel like we have not been a part of the conversation. I found about, I found out about it in the press, which is not great as a tech chair of the city council. So I just need to understand, what was your rubric? What were you looking at that said, this doesn't make sense, this is no good? And I also think that that a lot of these nonprofits have been doing this advocacy for so long. I think they're owed an explanation too. This is more about them than it is about me. So I would love to understand, where where were the deficiencies? Where were you all looking and saying like, this doesn't work? Because we have not been, you have not been clear.
Yeah, I I the 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 resounding feedback that I got frankly is that it it was going to take too long to get folks connected. I I think that this was released, and then no contracts were signed, and then the pandemic hit. And then it was 18 months later and and folks still hadn't been connected. So this administration came in and said, how do we fix this need right now? Folks got sent home in the pandemic, kids had to go to school online, people had to go to work online, people had to do telehealth online, obviously. So it was about fixing that immediate need. But but I will, I will also say that the long-term, medium and long-term planning has not has not stopped, and we are continuing to do that. And we were also working with some of the respondents to the initial Internet Master Plan, and and Brett can talk a little bit about that, too.
Yeah, of course. And and we still strongly support expanding and diversifying the marketplace so that the those community ISPs, the many of whom are MWBs as well, that they get into the marketplace to ultimately bring down costs. So that that's that's obviously was a key component of the master plan that we would, we are planning to continue, but just in a different form. As as Ryan mentioned, the the duration, the the length of the program, as as it was described and articulated, was way beyond what this administration's focus was. We wanted to get people connected now. And obviously, we're looking in in, you know, the the near, intermediate and and long term as well. But all of our efforts were getting people connected now. We didn't want people to continue to suffer without connectivity when we could very relatively easily provide them with that. But we are looking at long-term strategies. We are in conversations with many of the providers, I think all of the providers, who are interested in participating in the in the former plan and the plan as as was written, to see where there's opportunities for them in in this administration.
So I I hear that. I'm really eager to learn what some of those long-term plans look like. Again, it's a little disheartening that this all plan would have just been trashed or tabled. I get it for the the purpose of efficacy. I think that with any plan, there is an opportunity to really prioritize as opposed to just do away with something that I think took a long time to put together and I think really focused on diversity and inclusivity in a way that in the last year, we have not seen yet from this agency with specific to Big Apple Connect, right? So we have to confirm, it's the two, three providers, I think. I don't know if Verizon has been folded in, but it's Altice and Charter being providers. Has Verizon been folded into the conversation?
Not at this point, no.
No. But in September, I think that same day, we said, I think you all had said that you had started conversations, but it has not been formalized.
That's correct. We're still in conversations with Verizon, but as as of this point, it's just Altice and Charter.
So you briefly touched on wanting to kind of fold in some of these MWBs. What does that, what does that look like? I, you know, I'm working directly with a lot of these folks that had applied to the city's RFP, that got noticed that they got awarded, then they got told they didn't. So what are the efforts that you are all making? Because it it doesn't look good, y'all, to to put something out, to say you've been awarded and then say, just kidding, we're not moving forward, and then kind of give no recourse for how they can continue to do this work that, once again, they've already been doing in these communities. So what what does that look like? Because I spoke to them on Friday and they said they have not heard anything from OTI. The only, the only communication they got was a notice from SBS late in the fall saying that their RFP had been, their award had been rescinded. So what are you all doing to make this right?
Well, that's exactly what we're doing. We're looking to make it right. We're looking to work on a long-term plan that will include many, if not all, of those providers. So as it currently stands, they they all, the the ones who participated in the program prior to the the RFP going out, part of an RFEI, they do have infrastructure in place at certain NYCHA developments today, and they're providing their service and and participating in the ACP program. So they're still there and they're providing that. And we're looking at ways, like I said, to.
But those are the RFEI recipients that are still there. Is that who you're referring to?
That's correct, and many of whom are are those same, in the same group, yep.
Many of them got encouraged to apply to the RFB by the city. So can you all just also, before I pass it off to Councilmember One, for the Altice and the Charter at this point, are they required, what is a requirement for them to do programming, right? We spent a good portion of this hearing, all being in agreement of how important programming is, of being in agreement of how important it is to continue to expand and invest and not slash these programs. So it is unclear to me if they are required to partner or provide a program. Can you share with us what that contract looks like or what that expectation is of them?
Yeah, thanks for that question, Chair. So for the most part, well, entirely, the Big Apple Connect Program is just about access at this point, right? We have the great Connected Communities Program that's focused on the digital literacy and training and skills and upskilling. But, you know, obviously, there's a multifaceted approach to digital equity in general. You have the access, you have devices, and you have the 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 training. Big Apple Connect is about access, and and that's what they're laser-focused on at this point.
So, so no, is your answer?
Correct. It's just about connectivity.
So they're, okay. So, okay, it's about connectivity. So that's, I think, problematic in and of itself. I don't know if there's a way, if you're all open to building a part of the contract reflecting the fact that like connectivity, that programming is just as important as connectivity, right? I think OTI has provided a ton of data in the work that they've already been doing through the NYCHA Program to demonstrate, you know, there's a portion of of seniors that have these devices, but when they don't participate in the classes, when they don't participate in the workshop, they go unused. So so it's a it's a it's a waste, essentially. That's not what we want. So what can this administration, what can they do to enforce a system of, you know, mandating programming as well in these systems? I know, you know, I think there's a lot being put on the community center or the social service provider, but they're not often digital literacy experts, right? So what is the administration doing in these Big Apple Connect developments to ensure that programming is is happening?
Yes, I just want to be clear, though. It it really is two different functions, right? I mean, Big Apple Connect focused on access, Connected Communities focused on training, and they work in harmony with one another. As it relates specifically to NYCHA, we are working with Altice and Charter where there are older adult centers on NYCHA property campuses within the developments that we are working with those with the directors and the community groups that run those older adult centers to provide them with the connectivity so that they, they're already providing the services, they're already providing the the facility and the devices. And we're working with Altice and Charter to wire those development, those community rooms where the older adults congregate.
Thank you. I apologize. I would like to ask Councilmember One to make her questions.
Good morning. Thank you so much, Chair Gutierrez. I have a few follow-up questions. Good morning. It's good to see you all about Big Apple Connect. So from my conversations with Verizon, they have expressed the the difference between being a service provider for just internet, like Spectrum and Altice, and being a cell service provider in addition to internet, and how there's also a difference in the regulations, in the ways that they are held to a higher standard federally, and how they also are the only ones that are unionized, so their workers cost more. So there seems to be a lot of variables that are holding up why Verizon isn't part of Big Apple Connect. And I just wanted to understand what the latest negotiation has been because it seems like both sides want to partner, but there seems to be some sort of holdup.
Thank you, Councilmember One, and thank you for your support with all of Big Apple Connect in particular. Because we were still in conversations with Verizon, I I think, I I just want to be careful about the information we share at this point because we we want to move forward to the extent that we can. But I I would just say, you know, our goal is to ensure that all of the developments that are included in the program are, all the the residents and the households and people who are touched by it receive the same service, the same quality of service, and and we don't differentiate between one provider and another in terms of, not just messaging, which is probably the least important thing, but just, we we want people to have the same experience. We want them to have the same great experience that they're getting today. So that's obviously our our goal in ensuring that whatever provider we we partner with comes to the table with.
Because I just want to flag that this council class cares very deeply about union labor and making sure that we protect workers' rights. And we know that Spectrum has a history of union busting. And to withhold this contract from Verizon, I do, I think we need to understand the nuances of how much more the labor will cost because Verizon is unionized. So I want to make sure that that does move forward. Then I had a question. If you had a timeline for all of the rest of the NYCHAs that are still waiting to get connected through Big Apple Connect?
So we are, we are planning to add additional developments this year. We we committed to doing more in 2023. So we're looking at those developments to identify which ones are, may already have a broadband provider in place so that we're not duplicating efforts. But essentially, we'll hopefully have something to announce fairly soon.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember One. So I just have a couple more questions. The original RFEI, that my understanding is these ISPs, these smaller ISPs are still very much, they are, they're they're functioning, right? And that there isn't any overlap with Big Apple Connect in those developments where those recipients are working? That's correct, right?
I believe so, yeah.
You believe so, okay. Well, they told me on Friday, so. So my question is, and the the reason that I I keep bringing this up is because part of their contract is not only to provide internet service, but to also do programming. And these are smaller nonprofits that are like, that are doing it, right? And they have a lot less than an Altice and a Charter. So I'm just curious, I get that it's two separate things, but I'm just curious why we are not holding these huge wealthy corporations to the same, to the same standard that we are these smaller nonprofits, mostly led by women and people of color in these NYCHA developments? Why was the reaction or why was the 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 initial response to work with these big, huge corporations that aren't necessarily, were not always traditionally in these developments, hadn't done the groundwork to connectivity? It could be why you're having such a challenge in connecting the remaining population in these Big Apple Connect developments. But why are they not being held to the same standard of programming and internet service as these nonprofits, these smaller nonprofits, as designated in the RFEI? What, why?
It's a great question, Councilmember. So, well, I'll call back to what I noted earlier about it. This was really focused on access. We we totally understand the concern about why not, why not include other services, other other possible.
But digital literacy is access. Do you understand? If you give my mother a tablet, who's 72 years old, she is going to make it a part of her decoration in her room and not utilize it unless you're telling her and teaching her how to utilize it. So access is, yes, connectivity and all the logistical circumstances, but it's also learning how to use that device. Without it, it is not access. So that is why I'm really disappointed that we're not there yet. And I hope that you can all take this back, that I I think it's crucial that if the city continues to want to work with the Altice and the Charters of the world, that they be held to the same standard as some of these these smaller nonprofits that are not making, that are not making at all the same amount that they are. But they're being held to a different, their their protection is like, well, it's just about connectivity. Access is digital literacy, and I think it's really important that that you all drive, help me drive this message, that we can't just allow them to come into these communities and walk away and just be like, well, it's not up to us how they use it. Because it really is. It's, we are responsible. They are in contract with the city. That is our responsibility.
Totally understood, Councilmember. I I just, again, note that there are already really great programs in place at many of these NYCHA developments. Understood that, you know, your concern about the Altice and Charter is not providing the training themselves, but where we can partner, providing the the actual, you know, the connection within the apartment and the programs that are available onsite, many of which are just a few, you know, the next building or in the basement of that building where there is connectivity, they're, they have access to the devices, they have their own Wi-Fi hotspots, and they have digital literacy programs, like organized programs in place. We can certainly marry the two, and, you know, we will take back the your sentiments.
I had a conversation with Altice last week, right? They are also, they're not fully aware of kind of what the future in the next two years. So basically, they are aware of the developments that they're in now. That's kind of where they're at. They're unaware. In my conversations with Commissioner Fraser, the goal is to continue to expand, potentially in year three, even even continue to work with those RAD development sites that are excluded from Big Apple Connect. So it really needs, it sets a precedent, right? I don't believe that there's existing programs in every single NYCHA development. And so if the city is going into a contract, into a partnership with these big corporations, it's important that we set that tone now. We can't just rely on these programs that we'll learn in about an hour whether or not they are going to be sacrificed, whether or not they're going to be cut. But these corporations have money, and there is no reason why we should not be holding them to that standard. I'm going to pass it to Councilmember One.
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. For the Big Apple Connect that were contracted last year, I believe you said that those were three-year contracts, correct?
That's correct.
So for those that are being contracted in this year for 2023, are those three-year contracts as well, or will they be two years?
It's a really good question, Councilmember. I I need to go back to legal folks. I I don't want to give you the wrong answer, so allow us to get back to you to see if it's three years from the site date that those developments come on, or three years from when the contract was originally signed.
And for those that are being contracted this year, do you have a percentage? So if you're saying that out of all of X number of NYCHA houses, last year you accomplished getting X percent onboarded, this past year, is there a certain goal that you have, a target of how many NYCHAs and when the NYCHAs will all be onboarded by, including the RAD and PAC programs?
Well, certainly, our goals are more focused on the developments that are in play today and getting as many people sign up as possible. But no, as, obviously, as we get our, get under the hood with respect to the RAD PAC developments. But no, a- as, obviously, as we get our, get under the hood with respect to the RAD PAC developments, understanding what broadband requirements they have in place, cause many of them have broadband requirements that the private property manager, um, is required to provide some subsidized broadband connectivity. So we're, we're working through that now. I don't, I believe as of this date, there, none of those RAD PACs have a broadband provider in place that's providing the service. So we're looking to see if those can be enveloped in the program as well.
Okay, cause the word pilot itself means that it is a test run to see the success of the program before expanding fully. So I'm just trying to understand and have clarification. If this is a pilot, are you going to wait the full three years to see the completion of a hundred percent, um, registrations for the existing NITIA contracts before expanding to the whole entire city? Or is it, cause I see him shaking his head.
No, we're planning to expand to additional NITIA developments. We're not, we're, but in tandem, the, the near-term goal is to, is to get to as many, as many eligible households in the current developments that have Big Apple Connect, get them on, online. But, but no, we are going to, uh, in tandem, expand to additional NITIA developments.
So do you have benchmarks set for Spectrum and Altice and Optimum? In the NITIA developments that they currently are contracted for, what is their benchmark that, or targets that they need to hit per quarter to ensure that they're increasing registrations?
So I don't believe there's, there are benchmarks in terms of that. I mean, that's just our overall goals that we're working internally, both, you know, with our city partners and the providers themselves. There are benchmarks with respect to service, uh, performance and uptime and all that. So that, that's built into the contract. But with respect to how many people they sign up, it's our goal to get as many people as we can sign up into the program.
So just to put on the record, for the contracts themselves with the ISPs, they are not, there was nothing written in the contract of how, that they have to reach a hundred percent of registrations within the NITIAS. They would get paid no matter what, as long as they were servicing them to a certain standard?
They, correct. They, they will get paid for as many households that they sign up. That's what they get paid for.
So that's the incentive built in to have them sign up more people?
Yeah, absolutely.
And are you seeing increases in signup? How are you tracking that per NITIA development?
Yep. We, uh, we get daily reports from the providers, both of them automated daily reports that show the progress at each development. We meet with them weekly, um, both individually and then together to assess the, the, how things are going. As I mentioned, we have a really robust engagement, uh, public engagement plan. We're working with the providers during the, the warmer months. We're doing outdoor events, we're setting up tables and giveaways. Uh, we've had a, we've partnered with them on a number of turkey giveaways during the holiday season. We participate in family day events. We're working with them to distribute, uh, mailers and flyers. They're doing onsite door knocking. So there, there's a pretty robust outreach and, and engagement plan. And we're, we're, we're learning. We're trying to improve on it. So as we add more developments and as more people get signed up, we'll, we'll learn from those and, and improve on them going forward.
Do you, would it be possible for you to share the current enrollment data with the Chair and the rest of the committee per NITIA development, so that we can understand how the council members of those districts can also support to increase enrollment in these NITIA developments?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. A couple more questions regarding Big Apple Connect. Um, and I think Councilmember One kind of alluded to it. In the September hearing, you know, we discussed, you all shared that it was about, you were looking at a three-year plan, um, and that you are still evaluating what would happen after the three-year period. Do you have some sense of where you are, of, of what that looks like beyond, I guess, the 2025 benchmark?
Uh, no, not at this point. I mean, we're obviously encouraged by the, the increase in subscribership just in this last month or so. It's actually been a, a, a significant uptick. But beyond that, I, I think, you know, we, we do want to add more developments. We are gonna add more developments in the coming, um, months. And, you know, as we do that and we see where there's additional opportunities to expand the program, we'll certainly explore those. But, um, beyond that, I, I think we want to take a, you know, a deliberate approach in terms of how we roll out the program.
In your testimony, you shared that there was a Big Apple Connect RFP. Is that the case? We haven't seen it. Do you, do you, this was in September, I think. Is that September testimony? Yeah. So my understanding was that there was an RFP, and, and so that's why it went to the Altice and Charter. Do you have a, can you share some information about the RFP that went out?
Uh, I will have to check to see what, what solicitation or RFP, or, or whatever it's, whatever form it took, uh, in terms of sending it out to those providers. But yeah, well, you know, whatever we have, we can certainly send, yeah.
Yeah, if you could share that, um, and if you could also share just who else applied for it. I'm curious about that. Um, I have some follow-ups on some of the, the prior hearings. Um, so obviously, you can, you can let me know where, where we're at. In August, Commissioner Frazier testified that the department did a survey of every agency and all technologic, all technology programs, um, that they have running of significant size and scale. So OTI could begin to do an assessment to see areas where you all could consolidate, save costs, areas that needed support management and quality assurance. Do you have a sense of what was DIFTA and DCAST's responses to those surveys?
I do not have that in front of me, but we can follow up.
Okay. Would love to, to learn that. Uh, my next question is regarding the MyCity app. In July, the mayor and the agency announced the plan to create the centralized portal dubbed the MyCity Portal or MyCity app, um, which would allow New Yorkers to apply online for all city services, with the first phase being available in the fall of 2022. Uh, what is the progress? And my understanding was also that there was supposed to be, uh, the first accessibility was for the Department of Education? That's correct. So I'm curious, what is the progress? It is 2023. What do we got?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, so the first MyCity service, uh, will be a childcare portal. And it, it will help families sign up for childcare subsidies. Um, and the mayor, the, the mayor has said, uh, over the past few weeks that it will be ready in, uh, early 2023, and we are on target to, to hit that benchmark. And so we should have more to share in the coming weeks.
Interesting. And what is the next? So, early 2023, I mean, we're January. When, when are you all looking? Is, is there, is there a calendar timeline?
Uh, in the co- in the coming weeks, uh, but, but still in technically early, early 2023.
So something that the Commissioner had shared in one of the hearings was, was, you know, his belief in like testing this out, obviously. I'm curious if you are all testing any bit of this portal. Granted, I get it's about ch- early childcare right now, but any part, part of this portal, is it being tested on our, our aging population?
I will have to, to speak with the MyCity team, but there is a robust, um, effort to do, uh, user testing on, on this technology. It's not just being created in a government office in a vacuum. They're, they're bringing in real New Yorkers to use this technology and navigate it to make sure that it makes sense. And that's, that's the whole thesis behind MyCity.
And can you confirm that there will be a deliberate approach to, to testing this on older adults, sixty, sixty-five and up?
Yeah, I will, I will have to check with the MyCity team, but I can get back to you on that.
Okay, I hope so.
Thank you.
Can you also share about the MyCity app? Can you share if there is going to be an opportunity for people to, like, fill out a web form or fill something out if there's some kind of issue? I think, you know, at, at that hearing, I think it was the August hearing, uh, Councilmember Brewer shared with, uh, Commissioner Frazier that she's got reservations. I think we all do, right? I don't think that there's a lot of trust, um, just yet that New Yorkers have an ability to really streamline this in a centralized way. I think the idea is great. We haven't seen it. We, we keep getting pushed back timelines. So already, the trust is being chipped away at. Originally, it was fall 2022, now we're looking at early 2023. But is there, are you all planning for that as part of this app? That, you know, people, New Yorkers can communicate when something is wrong?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And then, do you have a sense of what the protocol is once this complaint is received?
Yeah, I'm not on the, on the MyCity tech team, but I can, I can check with what that process is.
Got it. Thank you. Well, I am, I mean, I'm looking forward to it. I hope that maybe we can touch base with OTI before it's officially up and running. My next question is regarding the hearing that we had in December, which was a joint hearing, um, with the Committee on Fire and Emergency. Can you all share, what is the internet service provider that the city uses for FireCAD?
I do not have that in front of me, but I can follow up with the Public Safety Team.
Okay. You don't know. So you don't know if the city has, if you all have considered switching that inner, e- even switching that internet service provider? Okay. My next question, um... Yeah, that's what I said. Okay, I think, I think that's it. I think what we hopefully will want to continue this conversation. I, I'm encouraged by the fact that we are all in agreement of how important accessibility is. Oh, do you, Councilmember One?
I just had a off-topic question that I've been, um, hearing from my NITIA residents. I was wondering what the latest update is for the digital wallet? For digital payments, for SNAP benefits and other EBT, et cetera? I know that that was being worked on last year, and I was wondering if there was any update on the progress?
I unfortunately don't have an update on progress, although I, I do know that that remains a priority for the administration and also CTO Frazier.
Okay, okay.
We can come back to you with, with a, a better sense of a timeline on what that could look like, cause I know that it does remain a priority, but I just, I just haven't been read in on, on where that stands.
Okay, and then I just want to put on the record that, uh, many of the residents who would have to be part of this digital wallet program, their main concerns that they raise is their privacy and surveillance and security from the tracking of every single transaction that they would be doing, location tracking, et cetera. So we will be paying close attention, and I look forward to a hearing that the, um, Chair will be having. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember One. Just before, I think we want to pass over to a public testimony next? Oh, no, we have one more testimony. But I... My last question is, um, just regarding accessibility at every hearing. We have, um, consistently testimony from, uh, New Yorkers who are hearing impaired, vision impaired. And it just seems like they keep coming and testifying, because they just don't feel like they are being seen or heard or listened to. I'm curious if you can share any insight on how some of those issues that they raise around Link NYC. I'm not sure if they raise any issues around Big Apple Connect, but how this agency has been addressing those concerns? I'm sure we'll hear from, from some folks in that community today, but it is, I think we should take this seriously, that they're showing up and they're testifying, they're participating every single time, because they're not really being listened to, and their needs are not really being incorporated. So can you share anything right now that OTI is doing uniquely to respond to this community?
OTI just held, um, a, a meeting with, uh, folks, uh, from, uh, from that community. I'm, I'm blanking on the date, but I believe it was two weeks ago.
Was Commissioner Frazier there? Cause I know that that was important, that they meet with the Commissioner.
Yeah, yeah, Commissioner Frazier was not there, but I was, I was there as a deputy commissioner, and also the deputy commissioner for Public Safety was there, because the primary concern was on the next-gen 911 system and making sure that it's built in an accessible way. And that was the primary topic that, um, that folks wanted to discuss. And as part of that, um, and also, I, I will say, the, um, the mayor's office, um, for, uh, people's disabilities was, was also there, and that Commissioner was, was there too. And so we had a, a productive conversation. And as part, as a follow-up to that conversation, we were setting up a regular cadence, um, with that community to regularly update them on the next-gen 911 system, which seems to be the, the highest priority, at least from what we heard in the meeting, um, but also other OTI initiatives too. And so it, it's looking like, um, uh, we're, we're still going back and forth on the cadence, but it's looking like it's going to be a, a quarterly, uh, meeting between OTI and that community to, to give regular updates and, and get their feedback on projects.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna pass it off to Irene, but before that, I just want to thank you, Roman, for being here. I look forward to continuing to, to work this out with, with you. I know that it, you know, I'm, I think there's a lot more to gain here. It seems a little bit out of the wheelhouse, but I think that there is a lot to gain from here. If you, if you hear from these nonprofits on the ground, that could benefit from these, like, totally usable devices. Um, so I hope that we can continue this conversation. I know it's not the end. Um, and then from OTI, we will continue to have this conversation. I am really looking forward to the next time we meet, that there's more specifics around how the agency will work with these, um, smaller ISPs that were awarded RFP, was rescinded, how we're folding them into this bigger connectivity discussion. Um, and of course, love, would love to learn a little bit more about the agency's long-term planning, now that the Internet Master Plan is not real. So I look forward to that. So I will pass it off to Irene. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and I want to thank everyone for your testimony. And now we'll turn to the public testimony. Unless any council members have any more questions? No. Th- thank you again.
Thank you all.
And to accommodate every witness who registered to testify today, we kindly ask to limit your testimony to three minutes. And our first panelist will be Marco Di Girolomo. And I apologize if I mispronounced the last name. He will be testifying via Zoom, and then we'll turn to all witnesses who are here with us in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you, Chair Gutierrez, and the Committee on Technology for holding this important meeting today. My name is Marco Di Girolomo, and I am the Director of In-Person Experiences with Older Adult Technology Services, or Oates, from ARP. Oates is an award-winning social impact organization that offers technology programs, community training, and strategic engagements to shape the future of aging. Oates is also the creator of Senior Planet, a national program that helps older adults aged sixty and over thrive in the digital world and use technology to improve their lives in five areas of impact, which are social engagement, financial security, civic participation, health, and crea- and creativity. Oates flagship Senior Planet Center opened in Manhattan in 2013, and in the past decade has provided older adult, older New Yorkers with a welcoming space to learn and use technology. Our center has a robust computer lab, an open seating style, working space, and cutting-edge technology readily available that older adults can touch and experience for themselves. Oates has historically and currently receives funding from the New York City Department for the Aging to operate our Senior Planet Center, as well as provide our programs in, um, OACs across the five boroughs. As the Oversight City Agency for Older Adults, Adult Services, DIFTA plays a crucial role sitting at the intersection of older adults and city services. I'm here today to speak in support of passing Intro 665 legislation to establish and implement an online digital literacy program to serve older adults. Despite our growing reliance on technology, twenty-two million older Americans remain on the wrong side of the digital divide. At Oates, we're on the mission to change that by working to empower older adults with the skills needed to harness the power of today's technology. Being online not only connects you to the world, it has the ability to connect older adults with answers to questions, solutions to needs, and even tools that can help them save money through price comparisons and online banking. And, um, a recent report on our organization, that our organization released with the Humana Foundation, found strong evidence that technology interventions can play a significant role in driving behavioral social change for older adults, helping them combat social isolation, loneliness, and depression, all while improving the quality of their life. In a world where interactions are increasingly taking place online, giving older adults the tools to use modern technology could great, could greatly improve their lives, giving them access to not just important resources like public health information, but to the social communities that they depend on as well. New York City is known for the strength and resilience of its diverse communities. That includes our vibrant community of older adults who deserve to thrive and benefit from today's innovative technologies. Passing Intro 665 would significantly help combat the digital divide among New Yorker, New York's older adults. By providing seniors the skills and knowledge to actively participate in our digital economy and to connect with the ones they love, this bill would pave an exciting and necessary way forward for New York's older adult community and in turn, the city as a whole. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much for your testimony, and we move to our next panelist. We'll, uh, proceed with, uh, witnesses who are here with us in person. And our first panelists are Christian Gonzalez Rivera and Brianna Patton-Williams.
They might start when you're ready.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, good morning, Chair, and good morning, council members. Um, my name is Christian Gonzalez Rivera, um, and I'm the Director of Strategic Policy Initiatives at the Brookdale Center for Healthy Aging at Hunter College. So we're a research and policy center that's based in Hunter College that focuses on older adults. So the Brookdale Center supports Intro 665. Uh, so thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez, for, for introducing it. Um, I'm also in your district, by the way, is where I live, so. Anyway, um, so in, uh, in 2021, we published a study, uh, that detailed the demographics of older New Yorkers, um, without access to the internet, and also summarized the academic research on internet adoption that shows that older adults learn and adopt technology differently than, uh, younger people. And recommended, among other things, uh, the establishment of a digital literacy program for older adults. Um, so we're happy to see you put this together. So I'd like to offer a few of our research findings, um, on how to structure a digital literacy program for older adults so that it's effective for those who are hardest to reach, um, according to the demographic analysis that we did. So meaningful access technology, you know, has five components. The first... The first two are access to a device and access to an adequate digital connection, which of course are for everyone. But for older adults in particular, that's not enough. I mean, it's like you also need the education to know why the internet is useful, also the training to know how to use the internet, and then also the ongoing tech support, you know, in case something goes wrong. And so then our review of the literature shows that for older adults, also how what, how a technology is useful is more important than just how to use it. So basically, you have to know, well, what is this really for? Why am I going through the effort to learn about this? Before you even jump into learning how to use it. And of course, this this is sort of a logical question. I mean, imagine eighty five year old who says, well, I've been living all my life without using it. Why should I start now? You know, so what this really means is that an effective digital technology program really starts with, you know, not by telling a participant, this is how you turn this thing on, but instead by saying, what are your needs? And then teaching them, you know, why, how the internet might be helpful for getting whatever that need is met. So furthermore, our review of the literature shows that older adults learn best from their peers as opposed to sort of in a formal classroom setting. So we recommend that kind of peer to peer learning approach for these programs. So that means, you know, structuring a program so that you have older adults with more experience in using using technology, of which there are many, teaching people who have less experience in in using technology. And the fact is that some of the people who are hardest to reach are those with lower levels of formal education. So access to the internet at home, according to the, to the work that we did, is most correlated with three things. I mean, first, age, second, level of formal education, and third, income. So, and and in that order as well. So in majorities of older New Yorkers, almost done, sorry. Majorities of older New Yorkers in their, of people in their sixties across all income and education levels are connected already to the internet. Whereas as you get older, as as you get into older cohorts, there are fewer people who are who are already connected. And likewise, I mean, people who have a bachelor's degree of and higher of any age are much more likely to be connected than, you know, those with less education. So what this all points to is that right now, a lot of digital literacy programs are very classroom based. So you sit there, you're going to learn Photoshop, you're going to learn this, you're going to learn that. But the fact is, I mean, it's like for this population that we're talking about, it's much better to just sit down and say, okay, what do you need? And then start from there. So we recommend that, to the extent that money is going to be put into this, to do those peer to peer programs in addition to the great classes that, for instance, ODS is already putting together. Because certainly you can start with a peer focus and then move on to, you know, further education through through class based. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Yeah, that's great feedback. Thank you so much. Thank you for sharing that.
Hi, I'm Brianna Padden Williams, the Communications and Policy Associate at Levon New York, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today. Levon New York's members include more than a hundred and ten nonprofit organizations that provide core services which allow all New Yorkers to thrive in their community as we all age. For almost three years, Levon New York's members and the entire aging sector network have found new ways to provide critical services to older New Yorkers in the face of unprecedented demand and a public health crisis. And technology has been the core to make this work possible. As a couple of years ago overnight, older adult centers had to go virtual and phone calls really became a main mode of communication with clients. And this work is critical as social isolation is now understood to be a significant health risk and predictor of morbidity, morbidity, excuse me. To put it simply, the ability to remain connected has undoubtedly saved lives. And today, many older adults can't afford to purchase technologies such as tablets and computers. And even if the device are given to them, as Christian has mentioned, it's difficult or almost impossible to afford monthly internet access. And furthermore, the pandemic has really exacerbated the digital divide and has brought increased awareness to its existence and really highlighted the effects of not combating this problem of this issue. And and to address that, Levon New York is proud to offer the following recommendations. And firstly, we invite the city to utilize our aging policy agenda. Aging is everyone's business. That Levon New York worked in partnership with the Hunter College Brookdale Center for Healthy Aging, which is a policy agenda that provides policy solutions, including technology solutions, to make New York a better place to age. And secondly, long term solutions, the city should look to broaden and fund collaboration with older adult centers and organizations such as Planet, Senior Planet, excuse me, which provides and offers hotline and courses to broaden tech access among older adults. And like we've mentioned, it's important to keep in mind that of older adults who have internet access, nearly half require access, require existence, excuse me, to use internet or to set up their devices, and many are reliant on family for this support. Secondly, we ask the city to increase investments in the technology infrastructure at older adult centers and community based organizations. And we know older adult centers have utilized technology to keep tens of thousands of older adults safe and connected during the pandemic. And so it's critical that centers have the strong technology infrastructure to further enable centers and other DIFTA programs as well to connect with older adults through virtual programming and beyond. Additionally, we ask for additional funding to expand DIFTA's virtual programming and accessibility. And this includes through an online database, devices, and connectivity, as well as further recommendations found in our aging agenda to deputize and fund a local adult centers and other organizations to act as information hubs in the event of a disaster. And also to make free public tech support available to older New Yorkers. And lastly, we applaud Technology Chair Gutierrez for introducing legislation aimed at promoting access to technology. And we thank Councilmember Gutierrez as well as the co sponsors. And so we offered the feedback for Intro sixty six five, which is to require the Department of Technology in collaboration with the Department for Aging to just to establish and implement an online digital program. And so while this bill is a step forward to address technology access for older adults, we really encourage the city to work in collaboration with community based organizations that already have existing programs and support in place for older New Yorkers. And lastly, we also ask the city to assess the necessary funding that would be required to provide this support as well. And lastly, we also support Intro Bill six six four. More information can be found in our written testimony and thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you all so much for sticking around to testify. I have a question actually for for both of you, Brianna and Christian, and then Marco online. Obviously, I'm I'm so grateful for the work that you are doing, for this advocacy that you're doing. It's very personal and it's very relevant for every New Yorker. If we are all lucky enough to age, we will all need the support that we are very much advocating for. So the sense that I got from the administration regarding the the digital literacy program was these things are already happening, right? They already exist. We're not the experts. But in your work and in your research, do you all think that there is a benefit to be had from having a much more comprehensive digital literacy plan? And do you think that there's a benefit to having an agency like OTI be a relevant partner in maybe accountability measures or infrastructure? Do you think that there is an asset that they provide in that larger conversation? And anybody can can answer that.
Okay, sure. Yes, absolutely. I mean, it's like there's a benefit to that partnership. I mean, as the the representatives from OTI said, OTI might be a good partner to provide funding, provide structure, provide metrics, et cetera. I mean, it's like maybe not directly administer the programs, especially because, you know, especially when we're talking about immigrants and other people in community who might be needing this this help. They're much more likely to go to a trusted organization, a nonprofit organization that's local to them, that they know about. And if those programs exist in those in those community organizations, they're much more likely to to connect versus to go to a government office, et cetera. I mean, it's like to to learn that. So of course, older adult centers are one such place, you know, that is, exists in many in many communities. There was also the idea of having, of opening up some public schools to do this work. Again, I mean, it's like that's done in collaboration with with local nonprofits. So again, yes, they can definitely be a partner in coordination, in pushing money out to communities. But the important part is that the face of any of this program has to be at the community level.
Has to be the nonprofits that are doing this work. And do you all, as folks, especially ODS, doing this work in such a great way, do you think you have everything you need to connect with every single aging adult that needs a service?
That we have everything we need? Well, I mean, I think I think you're be the person to start that one.
I need you to say it on the record. I know what the answer is. Why don't you say it on the record? Because I think there's a little bit of pushback on like what more we need. So yes.
I mean, echoing much of what Christian has said in that community based organizations like older adult centers are really a trusted source for older adults in the community. And we've really seen that throughout the past two to three years throughout the pandemic with keeping older adults connected. But also recognizing, like you've mentioned, that, you know, access to, and you as well, that access to technology is kind of like a three prong issue of having access to the devices, having access to the support, as well as the internet broadband. But really just recognizing that we really have a strong infrastructure in place through our community based organizations that provide much of the services and programs. And so we really welcome the collaboration, but also really recognizing much of that infrastructure exists of addressing technology access for older adults.
Yeah, and and also I wanted to add as well that ODS is a great resource in this case as well. I mean, it's like, as as has been mentioned before, I mean, where even if we're if we're taking the example of this sort of peer to peer model, you can still have organizations like ODS, I mean, it's like that already know how to train people to be trainers who could be an excellent partner in this case as well. And again, I mean, it's like what what are needed are the resources to bring together, a lot of resources that already exist. I mean, it's like you already have older adults who have technology experience, maybe they're retired professionals who wouldn't, maybe wouldn't mind a stipend. I mean, it's like to be, you know, working a few hours, helping other older adults access technology. So of course, that requires some funding. You already have the spaces in older adult centers and there's the desire to do it, except not all staff, I mean, it's like are trained in being able to be trainers. The resources are there. It's just about, again, putting the funding behind it and and making a program that people recognize.
Putting more funding behind it.
Yeah, but sorry, yeah, exactly. Be funding the resource that already exists, yes.
And Marco, and so to, and much of your testimony pointed out to it, and I thank you all for providing the survey regarding the work that y'all were doing in Nisha. It was really important to understand. You know, I think I think once you see the data, you understand that it's just not, it's not just enough to provide connectivity in a device. Really, it will just be useless if if we're not really engaging with these folks. So I want to thank ODS. And Marco, I also just want to say Councilmember Palladino wants to connect with you after the hearing, just to make sure that we have that contact information. That's it for me on the questions. Do you have any questions?
I do not have any questions, but I have to tell you, as a senior, I am really impressed by what's going on. I just need to see more implementation of what's going on. Coming from a district that does not have Nisha, I do need, my seniors need their connections. And just because they're seventy or seventy five years old or older, I'm so impressed by some ninety year olds I've met. They put some of us to shame. They are sponges. They want to learn. And I just got done talking to the chairwoman here, that when they go to their senior centers, they go for breakfast, they go for, they go every day for social interaction. But they don't want to sit there and glue little dots of things onto paper. They are bright, they absorb like a sponge. They want to be part of this world that we're existing in today. But they need the accessibility in their senior centers in order to do that. You brought up a very good point about those that already have the knowledge. Volunteering their time is vital. Funding is going to become bare bones. And we would be kidding ourselves to think that much more funding is going to be thrown into a lot of these programs that we desperately need to keep. So as Chairwoman also said, we need to tap into other avenues and not just rely on New York City to fund these programs. Next year, fiscal year twenty four, I think we're going to see some very, very serious cuts. But programs such as these must find other avenues. And we must, as city council people, we owe it to our districts to seek it out with your help. And let's figure this out because we do need it, the seniors need it. And I'm very impressed by what I heard here today. So thank you very much. But you also said one other thing about finding the use, for example, food shopping. A lot of people need their groceries delivered. I am an Amazon food shopper because I don't have the time to go to a grocery store anymore. So you have a lot, so you define a need, teach them how to use it. That was very interesting what you said. And I think a lot of them want to learn all of this and also connect with family members. But usefulness, shopping is huge. A lot of them cannot get out in the cold weather. They, this is great. What you said was awesome. So I want to say thank you again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. And just to clarify, I I I think that our budget should be prioritizing these programs. This is where our city budget should be going to.
Yeah.
Thank you again for your testimony and we are going to proceed with our next witnesses who are here with us in person. And then we'll resume with our witnesses who are here remotely. And our next witnesses are Michael Cohen and Jessica Ramos.
One second, we're just going to turn your, can you turn your mic on? Just pressing it, make sure it's red. Oh, never mind. Thank you. I just want to make sure that we can hear you. Thank you.
Good morning. It is important for students to be provided with technology resources they need to be successful in school and for digital literacy programs to be established to benefit older adults. Students need technology resources to complete their assignments and to have access to software tools that help them with their classes. Having technology in schools increases the number of different subjects that students can learn, enables different ways of learning to be well accommodated. Technology classes for older adults provide an opportunity for them to learn how to use computers and helps them to acquire more in demand job skills. If the technology classes have more computers for the students to use, then they can have an easier time learning how to use a computer as they will have more personal hands on learning experience. If schools, colleges, and technology learning programs have more computers for students to learn on, then students can get better grades and be more prepared for career success. Schools, colleges, and technology learning programs have a deficit in the amount of technology resources they have relative to the number of enrolled students that need them. According to USA Today, five billion laptops have gone missing from New York City public schools. I once had to wait six weeks to be assigned a word processor in school and eight weeks for a laptop when the word processor was not a good solution for me to take notes in class when the word processor did not sufficiently fill my note taking needs. College students need access to computers that have the correct software installed on them in order to complete their homework assignments and group projects for their courses. They also require access to portable devices such as GPS receivers that they can use to collect data for their science classes which are in good working order. Technology learning programs need computers that can connect to the internet and are powerful enough to support applications of many types such as office productivity, media editing, so that students can learn about different types of computer related skills. If students had more technology resources available for them to use, then they would have an easier time following along in their classes. Having more technology resources in schools, colleges, and technology learning programs also increases the amount of learning that students can do using online resources after their classes to help them to better understand the material they were taught in class. High school and college students need access to websites that provide access to activities specified in their workbooks to be performed on a computer, such as flashcards and quizzes that are relevant to the topics they have recently learned about in class. They can also benefit from watching video or audio programs that are relevant to the classes they are taking in order to increase their interest in learning the material. Students in technology learning programs can use computers to practice using software on their own to complete sample assignments. There are also websites that allow users to learn how to use computer software and other aspects of technology at their own pace. Using a greater amount of technology resources, students will have the chance to enhance their own learning of the material and obtain better grades in their classes. surplus technology resources from New York City government agencies can provide students inexpensive technology resources day in their learning. Computers and other electronic devices that agencies are not using in their day to day operations can be put to good use to enrich the lives of others in order to help them become more educated and knowledgeable about an expanded number of subjects. Otherwise, surplus New York City government technology resources remain unused while they couldn't be better used somewhere else. Donating them will be an easy way for us resources to be redistributed to places, to other places throughout the city. surplus computers will also provide schools, colleges, and technology training programs to greater supply of electronics used to inspire students with what they need. All of the surplus equipment will operate well enough to replace any non market equipment that students are currently using to learn on and create more opportunities for remote learning to take place over the internet. Having greater supply of inexpensive technology available for use by students will help schools, colleges, and technology learning programs to provide for more encouraging places to learn. learning programs to provide for more encouraging places to learn. Surplus technology resources should only be redistributed for educational purposes and only to not, to public or nonprofit organizations. Organizations that do not provide educational services do not provide a sufficient benefit to the public for the use of donated computers, because they will not be used to support learning. If donated equipment is not used to support learning, likely be used for other purposes or designated as a public computer to be used by everyone. The surplus computers and other electronics must have the software pre-installed that is required by any organizations that request the equipment. All donated computers should be given, to be used in the areas of the requesting organizations where there is the greatest need for them. Computers should also be given with information about how they are to be used in other organizations.
Thank you, Michael. Did you have the testimony that you wanted for me to read as well? You can give it to them if it's okay. But thank you so much for your testimony. Thank you. Jessica?
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Jessica Ramos Cottone, and I am the Director of Workforce Services for Greenwich House. Wait.
Apologize, go ahead, sorry, Jessica.
Okay, so I'm the Director of Workforce Services for Greenwich House. Specifically, I am charged with implementing programming for older adults to either build their skills or attain work. We just opened a brand-new five-thousand-square-foot space in Greenwich Village in order to carry out this programming. Greenwich House was founded a hundred and twenty years ago, and we have been committed to addressing the needs of New Yorkers of all ages through arts, education, health, and older adult services. We applaud the committee for seeking opportunities to address digital literacy and access to technology, especially for older adults. In October, with support from the Department for the Aging, as well as Amazon and Crown Castle and other private foundations, Greenwich House opened the Lifelong Skills and Opportunity Center, in part to address these issues in our community. Expanded support from the city would go a long way towards addressing the great need for digital literacy support among older adults. A Pew study showed that forty-one percent of older adults do not use the internet, twenty-three percent do not use cell phones, and over seventy-five percent say they require help when learning how to use new technology. In our programs, we see a full spectrum of digital literacy challenges among our participants. We hear stories about people whose safety could be compromised if they were to fall or need help, because they live alone and do not have access to a cellphone, or their mental health is impacted due to isolation and lack of connectivity. Others simply want to be able to support themselves and re-enter the workforce. For example, one of our older adults had a successful consulting career, but she lost many customers during the pandemic, and her technology skills are outdated. She's eager to work, but has found the world of online job listings and applications to be frustrating. Despite her years of experience, she is having a hard time landing interviews. Finally, older adults often miss out on opportunities for digital connection at a time when technology has been all but ubiquitous for other age groups. Many lack the skills to use social media to connect with family and friends, or to even share photos. In our first introduction to computers course, which was taught by a volunteer older adult, we quickly filled up the room and had to turn people away. Some participants did not even know how to turn on the PC when the class began. Through our Lifelong Skills and Opportunity Center, we see a strong desire among older adults to learn these skills in a safe environment with their peers. We offer classes on everything from Zoom 101 to launching an online business, and we are planning upcoming courses like voice technology, contactless payments, and wearable technology. We urge the city to consider expanding funding for resources to ensure our older adult residents have the access to technology resources they need and want. The support we've received from DIFTA has been very impactful, but we also had to secure generous funding from Amazon for the lab and the computers, and we only have fourteen at this point, which is a critical tool for older adults. Right now, we rely on volunteers to run the lab. Staffing would be crucial for them to receive one-on-one support. Again, Greenwich House applauds the city council for working to address digital literacy and access to technology. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Jessica, and thank you for, for your work and sharing that, that data with us. I think it's really important that, you know, I wish that man was here to hear, but I think it's really important, because it's connectivity is, like the previous panel mentioned, it's, it's not enough to just say we have the internet and it's, it's in the ether, but you need the device, you need the connectivity, and you need the training. And I especially loved the stories that you shared about how it's being relayed peer-to-peer. I think that that's also a really key piece. So, we see the goal is that we keep fighting to ensure that this work continues, but also expands and evolves with the, with the evolving needs of our senior population. So thank you both for, for testifying today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, and now I will turn to our witnesses who are here remotely. And our first witness is Clayton Banks from Silicon Harlem.
Thank you very much, and I will try to be as brief as I can be, and that's not normal for me. But good to see you, all of you, especially Gutierrez and Holden, for doing this. This committee is the most important committee in, in New York City. I just wanted to comment on the Big Apple Connect. Questions that I would hope that the committee will talk to OTI about, one of them being, why are they bundling broadband with TV? I'd love to know what the point of that is. If the issue is that we want to make sure everybody gets internet, and we want people to be more digitally educated and things of that nature, what does TV have to do with that?
So that's a question I would love for this committee to ask. Why is there no competition? Would love to know the answer to that question, because of the Big Apple Connect. It looks a bit of collusion in that there's only two providers, and they get the, provided with no competition. Why did they need the subsidy, when the federal government gives you thirty dollars per month, per household? I'm curious why we want to put our money up for something that the federal government's already doing. So I'd love to know, I mean, I love the idea of making sure everybody gets the internet. What happens, which was a good question, if somebody decides they want to quit the program, for example, does that ISP continue to get money from the city? You know, these are questions that I think have to be addressed. I also would like to suggest that this committee take on some future thinking, one of them being cybersecurity. It's a critical, critical component of our, of our city. So many more things and devices that are being connected in our city, that is ultimate vulnerability. We saw it with the airlines yesterday. This is happening everywhere, but particularly in New York, and this committee ought to put that high on the list, and, and putting the feet to the fire of OTI and everybody else that is in this space. This is critical. But I am very concerned about how we're, if we're going to call ourselves the greatest city in the world, we got to get everybody connected. And I think it also allows for a better economic opportunities to those eleven companies that were talked about, a lot of them being MWBEs, including me, Silicon Harlem. And we are the ones that are hiring people. We are the ones that are training people. It's built into what we do with seniors. I do seniors every year. And so, I just think that the council should really help this OTI folks to know how much more it is when it comes to a ten-year, a twenty-year, a thirty-year plan, not a three-year plan. That doesn't make any sense to me. So thank you very much. I look forward to having these conversations moving forward.
Thank you so much, Mr. Banks. It's good seeing you, and absolutely agree. We need a thirty-year plan, not a three-minute plan. Thank you so much for testifying.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. And our next witness is Dr. Misha Porter from the Bronx Community Foundation.
Good morning, and thank you all for having me. My name is Dr. Misha Porter, and I'm the President and CEO of the Bronx Community Foundation. On behalf of the foundation, we are grateful for the opportunity to testify with the New York City Council today regarding the need for greater access to technology and digital literacy services across the city. Thank you to Chairperson Jennifer Gutierrez and all members of the committee for calling this hearing today, facilitating this important discussion. Founded in 2017, the Bronx Community Foundation is the first and only community foundation in the Bronx solely dedicated to delivering resources across the borough. The foundation works to eradicate inequity and build lasting, sustainable futures for all Bronxites. Central to this mission is our commitment to advancing racial equity and ensuring all Bronxites, regardless of their background, have access to the same opportunities. Closing the digital divide plays a critical role in achieving this mission. The last time I addressed you was as the New York City Schools Chancellor. You know that education is always at the forefront of my mind, which is why it is important to talk about digital disparities within our education system. According to a state Education Department survey conducted in 2020, between eleven and thirteen percent of New York City students in each borough lacked access to adequate internet during the pandemic when we moved to remote learning. We are now seeing reports about learning loss during this period, with sweeping declines in math and reading skills for elementary-age students. Students across our city saw their educational progress slow simply because they lacked access to reliable, high-speed internet access. As this one impact from the pandemic demonstrates, accessing technology and digital literacy is not just a privilege, it is an essential right to providing quality equity, education, and equity throughout our lives, from education to healthcare to employment. Yet far too many New Yorkers do not have high-speed, the high-speed internet they need. According to 2020 Census data, twenty-eight percent of all New Yorkers lacked high-speed internet access, with eighteen percent not having access at all. Internet access is even more limited for Black, Hispanic, low-income, and senior households, with over a third of Black or Hispanic New Yorkers lacking access, and nearly half of low-income and senior households without a broadband connection. Digital disparities are especially prevalent in my home borough of the Bronx, where thirty-eight percent of our households are without a broadband subscription, the highest percentage across all five boroughs. In some neighborhoods, like Melrose and Mot Haven, forty-five percent of households do not have reliable internet. Broadband subscription costs play, place a financial burden on low-income families, who might need to spend as much as ten percent of their monthly income on these services. Between housing costs, food, and healthcare, digital services may not be the immediate priority. We need to do better. The answer is to find alternative ways to provide internet access through the public and private sectors. The Bronx Community Foundation has been working to build new and support existing initiatives to solve the city's digital equity challenges. In 2021, the foundation gathered over thirty organizations to form the Bronx Digital Equity Coalition, a first-of-its-kind initiative in New York City. The mission of the coalition is to address the digital inequity in our community, and to bring about real change and growth through grants, volunteers, donations, and hard work. The coalition has provided digital resources and services to residents during the height of the pandemic. Together, we delivered laptops and other hardware, funding for digital services, and other resources to Bronxites in need. The coalition has continued this groundbreaking work after the height of the pandemic. This summer, we successfully launched the Bronx Gigabit Center at the Andrew Friedman Home, a community space with high-speed internet, technology programming, and small-business resource development. Powered by New York's Link NYC Public Wi-Fi Network, the center provides access to devices, workstations, and the internet. The center also provides digital literacy training and other services to Bronx residents. This is just one example of the ways in which community-led actions help to address this community-critical issue. But community groups cannot do it alone, and we must also rely on legislation and city support to aid in this work. The legislation proposed by the council today is a step in the right direction. Legislation 0664, which calls for donating surplus city-owned computers and software, not only helps bridge the digital divide, but it also is an environmentally sound way to repurpose resources. Given that the current requirement is to discard this equipment, the city should consider that so many New Yorkers could benefit from using it. As a former New York City Department of Education employee, having to simply discard equipment to the council members early comments, when the equipment could be useful to so many families and community-based organizations, was always difficult to do, yet that's what's currently required. A recent report from MPB cited that there are over $650 billion worth of unused technology in U.S. homes, with the average New Yorker sitting on $2,500 of unused technology. When considering the amounts of households without it, these numbers are staggering. The council should pass this legislation and ensure unused computers can go to those who need the most. Additionally, the city should encourage other businesses to do the same. The Bronx Community Foundation has been a leader in partnering with corporations and businesses to provide surplus servers, laptops, and computers directly to those most in need, which include schools in low-income areas, students and families, and centers that support older adults. Through these partnerships, the foundation is providing vital resources to our community and to help close the digital divide. Additionally, Legislation 0665 would establish a digital literacy program for older adults. This is key to advancing digital equity. Our seniors are most likely to lack reliable internet in their homes, with forty-five percent lacking a broadband connection. Older adults face a big gap when it comes to digital literacy, which limits their ability to access vital city services, connect with friends and families, and even learn about voting information. During the pandemic, when our older adults were the most vulnerable population, digital literacy and access to online healthcare information could have saved lives. The digital divide excludes older adults from too many activities of daily life. We must provide them with the training and confidence to be a part of the digital world. Aside from passing these two pieces of legislation, the city can and must do more to connect all members of our community. For starters, creating a municipal public network, as done in Chattanooga, Tennessee, can provide high-speed coverage and service to all New Yorkers while also netting financial returns. In its most recent strategic plan, the Office of Technology and Innovation outlines several specific initiatives to build a more connected city, such as creating a widespread portal to access city services and benefits, and launching NYC innovation hubs in underserved communities. I'm hopeful these plans will come to life this coming year. But the city can only do its best work by continuing to partner and work together with community groups, like the ones we've heard from today. And the Bronx Digital Equity Coalition is a testament to the real change that is possible when we prioritize community voices. Thank you again for allowing me to testify this morning, and I look forward to continuing to work with the council members on this important issue.
Thank you so much, Dr. Porter. It's so good to see you, and thank you for being here to support my legislation especially.
Thank you very much for your testimony, and now we're going to take a very short, two-minute break, and we'll resume with the rest of the witnesses on Zoom. Thank you. and we'll resume with the rest of the witnesses on Zoom. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We are resuming our hearing, and our next panelist is Elaine Roberts.
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, especially Chair Gutierrez, council members and staff. I'm Elaine Roberts, Director for Yes Well Programs for Catholic Charities Community Services. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today, and thank you for bringing attention to this critical issue. Digital literacy is a vital life skill for all New Yorkers, especially the adult literacy learners that we serve, a group that includes many older adults. Catholic Charities works in communities across New York City. We are grounded in the belief in the dignity of each person and in the commitment to build a just and compassionate society, especially for the most vulnerable. Right now, with funding from the city, we're operating a navigation center in Midtown to support asylum seekers arriving from the southern border. And as part of the city's Ukrainian Response Team, we're supporting families arriving from Ukraine. For the past 10 years, Catholic Charities has offered Yes Well and digital literacy programming for adult learners. We also work very closely with other adult literacy programs throughout the city as a member of the New York City Coalition for Adult Literacy, NiCal. NiCal is a group of adult literacy teachers, managers, students, allies from community-based organizations, CUNY campuses, library programs. Sorry. And we all work together to advocate for high-quality, comprehensive and accessible educational services for adults. Learners in our programs are some of the 2.2 million adults who lack basic literacy, numeracy, English language proficiency, and/or a high school diploma. Many of these same learners also lack digital literacy skills. These skills help learners use technology to search for, create, share information, communicate with others, and it requires the technical skills and also the ability to think about the processes. Adults with these skills can participate in their communities more easily. They're better informed, they can talk with, work with others, including family and friends, more easily. And, very importantly, they're more aware of how to keep their personal information safe. Although digital literacy has been a part of our programming since before the pandemic, it became much more important in the past three years. As we continue to recover from COVID, programs around the city have begun to work more intentionally on promoting digital inclusion, so ensuring everyone has access to the resources and the activities that they need to use technology, and also digital equity, which is creating the condition for all members in the community to fully participate and to access the services.
Time expired.
We applaud the support for digital literacy from the city council. As part of the city's recovery plan, the council made critical investments in adult literacy education these past two years, and that has directly supported digital literacy instruction. This city council adult literacy pilot project supported Catholic charities and 18 other community-based organizations. That collectively, we received 2.5 million in additional funding to provide support for students inside and outside the classrooms. And that additional funding led directly, in almost all cases, to digital literacy programming. 84% of the programs participating in that pilot used that additional funding to improve digital literacy instruction and to integrate better digital literacy skills into our work. Several of the programs developed curricula and supported their students outside the classroom by helping them access online banking and telehealth. In our own digital literacy program at Catholic Charities, we create a safe space where students can improve their technology skills and, most importantly, feel more confident about using these skills in their daily lives. So for many of our students, that includes connecting with family members in other countries. Some of the topics we teach: Zoom, email, Google Drive and digital security. And to further bridge the digital divide, we established a digital lending library of data-enabled tablets. Students in our program have shared comments. Some of them, they feel, sorry, "We like the confidence we have now, and we have lost our fear of technology." Another student shared, "Thank you for taking the time to teach us things so we can compete in today's world." And finally, we had another student who was working as a home health attendant, who shared, "Now I can look up information that I need for my use and also for my patients in my work." As we continue to use digital skills for more aspects of our daily lives and work, the city must ensure that all New Yorkers have access to the digital skills that they need to be active, engaged and productive members of their communities. We must commit to the idea of digital inclusion and create intentional programming that welcomes all and works to correct the historical, institutional and structural barriers to access and use technology. This work is being done across the country. The Federal Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act and the Digital Equity Act, passed in 2021, explicitly mention the importance of digital inclusion and digital equity. We applaud the council's ongoing support for digital equity for all and the new proposal to provide digital literacy programming for older adults, the Intro 665. We, in the adult literacy community, are well-positioned to be reliable and trusted partners in this work. Our programs are already serve communities throughout the city that are in great need of digital literacy skills, including low-income individuals, people of color, people with a low level of literacy and aging communities. Our programs are based throughout the five boroughs, and we are trusted partners for residents in these neighborhoods. Investing in digital literacy, especially for adults, results in social, economic and health benefits for individuals and for the city. And New Yorkers with digital skills can better navigate healthcare, support their children and their grandchildren in education, advocate for their own rights and participate more fully in democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Thank you very much for your testimony. We'll continue with our next witnesses, and we kindly ask to accommodate everyone to limit your testimony to three minutes. And our next witness is Kitty Rodman. Rodderman, I'm sorry if I mispronounced the last name.
Good afternoon, Chair Gutierrez and members of the Committee on Technology. My name is Kitty Ruderman, and I'm a volunteer with AARP New York. I'm here on behalf of AARP New York's 750,000 New York City members to voice support for Intro 664 and Intro 665, which would ensure that older New Yorkers have access to the technology that will support them in living independent, safe, healthy and happy lives. Access to technology can be a lifeline, opening connections to online banking, healthcare, ordering groceries and to education and job opportunities, and keeping us connected to family and friends. Unfortunately, too many older adults do not have access to all the tools they need to be digitally connected. It's a persistent problem AARP New York has raised. During the pandemic, internet access became critical for us all, but especially us older adults. It allows us to connect with family and friends to reduce social isolation. It also became key to seeing doctors when such visits couldn't happen in person. Intro 664, which would provide individuals and organizations with computer equipment and software, is the first step to access, particularly for low-income people who cannot afford such technology. Intro 665, which would establish and implement an online digital literacy program, is the second step in ensuring older adults can navigate the digital world easily and safely. Studies have found that participation in a technology learning program is associated with older adults reporting better health and less depression and loneliness. But to be most effective, digital literacy programs should be taught by experts, and we hope that any programs will be led by experts in the field. The final step in providing technological access to older adults is providing reliable broadband and high-speed internet access. Without it, all the equipment and instruction in the world is useless. AARP New York has long advocated for broadband access for all, and we hope to see movement on that front soon. According to a study by the Older Adults Technology Services, Oats, an affiliate of AARP, 22 million U.S. seniors lack broadband internet access at home. Oats estimates that only 61% of New York State residents over 65 subscribe to high-speed internet at home, compared to 78% of younger New Yorkers. By this measure, New York State ranks 35th in the nation for ensuring digital equity. The legislation that has been proposed would open the door to technology for many older New Yorkers. Still, we must go further to provide broadband access that would open an entire world for low-income older New Yorkers who are currently left out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. Our next witness is Tiffany Rogers.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Tiffany Rogers. I am a program manager at Encore Community Services, a nonprofit organization serving older adults on Manhattan's West Side. Our flagship physical older adult centers are located in the theater district. However, I am specifically responsible for overseeing our remote online programming. Like many other nonprofits, during the pandemic, we shifted our suite of classes and programming online. As we prepared to shift back to in-person operations, we found that a collection of older adults were not ready to come back. For some, this was due to COVID risk; for others, their health had reached a point that made it difficult to attend in-person programs, and some just found it easier to fit an online program into their routine. Additionally, we found that with online programming, we were able to include homebound older adults who had previously been missing access to education, fitness and community connections. As our physical center was reopening and getting back into full swing, we understood that we still needed to meet the need of connecting virtually. That's why in June 2022, we launched Encore Unlimited, our virtual senior center. We now offer a wide range of online meetings and classes each week, including art therapy, a class that utilizes simple art projects to work through feelings of depression, grief, loss and more. In addition, we offer classes like yoga, zumba, chair exercises, cooking workshops and health lectures relevant to older adults. Over the past several months, we have gained a steady number of regular members and plan to continue this model indefinitely. Our experience with online programming is why Encore Community Services is supportive of the council's effort to increase digital literacy for older adults. We see every day the power and potential of digital tools to prevent social isolation. While, of course, there are some elements of in-person engagement that can't be replicated online, the reality is that many older adults cannot make it to in-person events. They might be experiencing mobility or cognitive challenges that make leaving the house difficult and/or unsafe. For those fortunate enough to have family caregivers willing to accompany them to in-person programs are still plagued by being at the mercy of the caregiver's schedule and other responsibilities. Virtual senior centers and related programming can reduce barriers and fill the gaps for social engagement for many. I hear every day from members who find so much value in their online experiences. One member who frequently comes to our art therapy class was asked about her plans this past holiday and told the group that art class was her plan for the holiday. It was her main interaction, the thing that she had been looking forward to. Though there are so many stories like this, the benefits are not just anecdotal. Research and the pandemic clearly shows that social connections are imperative to sustaining physical and mental health as we age. But there are barriers to making this model work. Older adults may not be immediately familiar with the tools many of us use in the workplace, like Zoom. They're able to learn, but it might take longer or a few tries, and they may need someone to patiently walk them through it. Financially, they may not have access to the devices they need at home or access to the internet. We have also found that just offering online programming is not enough. I do significant outreach to find prospective Encore Unlimited members, and then we support those members with phone and mail communications. In addition to sending emails, our teams make phone calls to check in with members and see how they're doing. If any of our classes require supplies outside of the Zoom application, we mail members what they need and follow up to ensure that they have received them. It requires a robust effort to make this model work, but it is immensely worth it when you hear and see the impact it has on someone's quality of life. On behalf of Encore Community Services, I encourage the committee to move forward any and all efforts to improve digital literacy and reduce barriers to online connection for older adults. Thank you, council members, for your time today.
Thank you so much, Tiffany. Thank you so much, and our next witness is Christina Chiolo.
Hi, yes, good afternoon, Chairperson Gutierrez and members of the Committee on Technology. My name is Christina Chiolo. I'm the Executive Director of Power My Learning's New York City Region. Our organization is a nonprofit organization that is now nationwide, but was founded in 1999, right here in New York City. Power My Learning's mission is to advance educational equity by activating the power of collaboration between teachers, students and families. We do this by, first, approaching family engagement as a triangle of learning relationships in which students, teachers and families achieve educational success by working as a team; secondly, by using technology as a connecting force in which students, teachers and families are pulled closer together and closer together by technology, which removes barriers while encouraging face-to-face interactions; and thirdly, by activating the emotional power of learning with someone who really knows you. And this is when students, teachers and families learn with each other through personal and real-life experiences. As an organization that started and spent many years providing computer equipment to students and their families, we're in full support of Intro 664 that would require DCAS to donate surplus city-owned computers, computer software and computer equipment to public and private institutions for secular educational use and to not-for-profit institutions for use by individuals with disabilities, senior citizens or low-income individuals. This legislation would help bridge the digital divide that still exists using valuable resources. Today, Power My Learning partners with elementary and middle schools in under-resourced communities across the city to provide professional development for teachers, family engagement services and our digital learning tool, Family Playlists. Family playlists are hands-on, weekly extension math activities that are assigned by teachers and completed by students alongside their families. These leverage technology and were designed with equity in mind, so they're delivered via text message in over 100 languages. They include videos in English and Spanish, use materials commonly found at home and are aligned with the district's math curriculum. Our programs improve student learning outcomes while also strengthening social emotional learning skills. We commend Chairperson Gutierrez and the entire committee for bringing forward legislation that addresses the digital divide across diverse communities in New York City and look forward to continuing to work with the council and the Department of Education schools throughout the city. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and attention.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Our next and final witness is Linda Brill. Okay, I've just been informed that Ms. Brill is no longer available. And I want to say, if we missed anyone who has registered to testify today and has yet have been called, please use the Zoom hand function, and we'll call on you in order you raise your hand. I see no one on Zoom, so we'll conclude our testimony and adjourn the hearing. I see no one on Zoom, so we'll conclude our testimony and adjourn the hearing.